Good evening. It is 5:30 on Wednesday, September 27th, 2023, and this special meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am City Council President Kate McAllister presiding. Also present are councilors Deb Rule, Joel Aspero, Jason Welker, Justin Dick, and Andy Groot. Under the city's adopted codes of ethics and civility as the presiding officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel in the room who will be serving as Sergeant at Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn with us. If everyone will please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Just a quick announcement before we get started for those here in chambers who would like to speak during the public hearing regarding Bonner County's rezon requests. If you wish to speak, you will need to complete a sign-up form available at the table by the door. We have staff from the Police and Fire Departments in attendance at the room entrance. Please hand your form to them. Please do not approach the clerk or staff up here at the front tables. Please write legibly and include your first and last name on your form. You will also see options on the form to communicate whether you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or are opposed to each of the rezon requests. Please be sure to circle the appropriate option. The other item on the agenda regarding the Travers Park Construction Contract Change Order is not a public hearing, but the public will be afforded an opportunity to speak on this topic at the end of the meeting. If there is anyone who wishes to do so, just circle or put a checkmark next to that agenda item on the sign-up form. The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing and decision regarding city application number PZC 23-0001. I will ask for your patience, as there is quite a bit of information that will need to be stated here for the record before we get underway. As scheduled for this evening, City Council will hold a public hearing to consider the recommendations of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission regarding Bonner County's request to rezone a portion of the property at 4001 North Boyer Road from Mixed Use Residential (MUR) to Rural Residential 1 (RR1), and a portion of the property at 4203 North Boyer Road from RR1 to MUR. Following a public hearing on July 18th, 2023, the Commission voted to recommend denial of the MUR to RR1 rezon and to recommend approval with conditions of the RR1 to MUR rezon. I will now read into the record the legal descriptions of the parcels at issue. The legal description of the portion of 4001 North Boyer Road, Bonner County, parcel number RPS 3835001001AA that is requested for rezon from MUR to RR1 is as follows. A portion of Lot 1, Bonner County Readiness Center located in Section 10, Township 57 North, Range 2 West, beginning at the northwest corner of Lot 1 of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat, thence south 89 degrees, 26 minutes, 39 seconds, east along the northerly property line of Lot 1, a distance of 617.17 feet. Thence, south 0 degrees, 0 minutes, 0 seconds, east, a distance of 151.55 feet to the northeast corner of Lot 2 of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat. Thence, south 90 degrees, 0 minutes, 0 seconds, west along the shared property line between Lot 1 and Lot 2, a distance of 619 feet to the northwest corner of Lot 2. Thence, north 0 degrees, 40 minutes, 8 seconds, east, a distance of 157.55 feet along the westerly property line of Lot 1 to the point of beginning. This land is bordered by Samuelson Avenue to the west, the existing Fairgrounds property to the north, and the Bonner County Sheriff's Office to the east. The legal description of the portion of 4203 North Boyer Road, Bonner County, parcel number RPSRPS0000036601A that is requested for rezon from RR1 to MUR is as follows. A portion of the approximate 40-acre parcel known as the Bonner County Fairgrounds, which is the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 3, Township 57 North, Range 2 West, beginning at the south quarter corner of Section 3, which is the north quarter corner of Section 10 and the northeast corner of Lot 1 of the Bonner County Readiness Center plat. Thence, north 89 degrees, 26 minutes, 39 seconds, west, a distance of 495.15 feet along the shared property line between Lot 1 and the fairgrounds to a fence corner. Thence, north, a distance of 25.47 feet to a fence corner. Thence, north 88 degrees, 38 minutes, 7 seconds, east, a distance of 495.55 feet generally along an existing fence to the east line of said southeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Thence, south 0 degrees, 23 minutes, 14 seconds, west, a distance of 42.08 feet along said east line to the point of the beginning. This land is located between the playground at the southeast corner of the fairgrounds and the Bonner County Driver's Licensing Office. A notice of public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily Bee, the city's newspaper of record, on September 5th, 2023. I will now recite the order and procedure of the public hearing. Explanation of the subject of the hearing by city staff. Presentation by the applicant. Please note that council should address their questions to the applicant at that time. Two, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. The order of those providing testimony will be as follows. A, in favor; B, neutral; C, opposed. Three, applicant's rebuttal testimony, at which time final questions may be asked of the applicant. Please note that if new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public will be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Four, close the public hearing. Five, council deliberates. No new information may be provided after the hearing has been closed, with questions directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received in time were included in the meeting packet or otherwise provided to council members. I appreciate your continued patience as we get through all of this information and notes for the record. And at this time, I would like to ask for your specific attention as I recite the rules for participation during our meeting. Those in attendance shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, use threatening or abusive language, hold up or display any type of sign, speak out of turn, or clap, or engage in any other similar act which disturbs the meeting. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or other council members or to staff, and do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or other staff up here at the front tables, as this disrupts the meeting. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside within the Sandpoint city limits. I would like to note that this application was submitted by the Bonner County Board of County Commissioners. For the record, although one of those commissioners, Luke Amit, was formerly a member of the City of Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission, this issue was not raised or considered during the time Mr. Amit served on our commission. Therefore, there is no legal conflict with any testimony he may present or with council deliberating and making a decision on this matter. I will now ask each councillor to confirm that you have not had any ex parte contact that would impact your ability to make an impartial, fair decision on the application, and that you have no conflict of interest as pertains to this request.
No.
None?
No.
Madam President, as this has been a public matter that's been ongoing in the public discourse, I have been following it, but I don't believe that I have any conflict of interest or ex parte contact that would affect my decision.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. At this time, I will yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction and explanation of the request.
Thank you, Madam President, councilors. Again, this is a public hearing on a rezon request for portions of two properties owned by Bonner County. 4203 North Boyer Road is the property to the north. It is on the rural residential, RR1, rural residential 1, and houses the county fairground, facilities, and a playground. The request is to rezon a portion of that property, approximately .3 acres at the southeast corner, to mixed-use residential. That's shown on the image. The pink is the RR1 parcel. The green is the mixed-use residential. The square showing the arrow down would be zoned to the zoning MUR. The square to the left would be zoned to the pink, which is the rural residential. Property rezoning is the first step in the development process. At the time of rezoning, all uses allowed in the proposed zoning district must be considered when evaluating whether the request is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Any specific use in the zoning district proposed would be required to follow the development regulations and the process particular to that use, whether it is a permitted or a conditional use. When considering a rezoning, there are required findings that the council must make. The first is whether or not the proposed zone changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the second is whether or not the proposed zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. Also required is consideration to be given on the impact of the rezon on the delivery of public services by any political subdivision. Again, the entire property, both property, all property owned by Bonner County is within the context area 3 of the comprehensive plan. Context area 3 is described as supporting development patterns with higher density residential development through small lot sizes and shared open space with traditional street grids. It is also limited to residential uses and does not identify any of the existing uses owned by the county in that context area. The surrounding zoning, again, the properties owned by the county are zoned RR1 and mixed-use residential. To the west is residential multifamily. To the east is residential single-family, rural residential 1, industrial general. To the south is residential multifamily and single-family. Development standards of the two districts in general, you'll see based on lot size and lot coverage, the rural residential is a much lower-density zoning district, and mixed-use residential is intended to be a more dense zoning district. It is considered, or it falls in the zoning code as a commercial zoning district. Permitted uses in the rural residential 1 are quite limited to residential, horticultural, tree farms, home occupations, accessory dwelling units, short-term rentals, and fairground facilities as of 1998. And then conditional uses include churches, police and fire stations, public utility facilities, schools, and expansion or addition of new fairground facilities and events fall under conditional use approval process. The mixed-use residential, again, is a commercial zoning district, so it does allow a wider range of dwellings, both single-family, multifamily, above ground floor, as well as numerous commercial uses, but does limit the size to the commercial uses of 3,000 square feet for most commercial uses. And it does allow public safety facilities and some minor industrial uses. Conditional uses are assisted living facilities and then athletic clubs greater than 3,000 square feet. Again, as noted, when looking at the future land use map, the existing uses are not identified in the context area, so when evaluating the comprehensive plan, you also will be considering goals and objectives and policies that are in the plan, and whether those support or do not support the requested rezon. Again, being a very comprehensive document, there are lots of goals and objectives. So this table indicates goals and policies in support and not in support of the rezoning to the mixed-use residential. That is, again, the smaller piece to the east. And from Chapter 4 Land Use Policy, again, the goals that are supported by this rezon are related to housing and increased density of housing, both from Chapter 4 Land Use, Chapter 5 Housing, and economic development. So those are policies and goals that support the rezon. And then, goals that are not supported by that rezon are fall under recreation. And then also, the context area does state that it is a strictly residential area, and the mixed-use residential does allow commercial uses. So that would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Similarly, to the rezon to the rural residential 1, there are numerous goals and objectives that could both support or not support. The ones that support are generally related to recreation and economic development, as well as, to a degree, public services. It is a lower-density residential district, and we do know the schools have concerns about increased housing development. So that would be a support of not creating impact for schools, not as much impact for schools. And then, the goals and objectives that are not supported by rezon, again, deal with increasing density of housing. And that's the main area of the comprehensive plan, not supported by the rezon to rural residential 1. Again, at the July 18th Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing was held, and based on the Commission's findings, they have recommended approval of the rezoning from RR1 to MUR. Again, as indicated on the map, it is the smaller portion on the right-hand side, and then recommended a denial of the rezoning from mixed-use residential to RR1 on the left-hand side. And just, again, the required findings for a rezoning are whether or not the proposed zone changes are consistent with the comprehensive plan, whether or not the proposed zone is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site, and that consideration has been given to services of other political subdivisions. And again, just overview to show which parcels are being rezoned from RR1, or which portion of RR1 would be rezoned to mixed-use residential, and which portion of the mixed-use residential property would be rezoned to rural residential 1. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Does council have any questions for staff at this time?
Madam President, Amy, excuse me. Over here on this slide right here, we have Samuelson Avenue, right here, and on the left of the screen here, are these multifamily houses, single-family houses?
Those are all multifamily. There's the existing Samuelson multifamily, which is about 120 units. The under construction, there's both senior and multi, non-senior multifamily of 139 units. And then we also are expecting to the north end of Samuelson, another about 150 multifamily units.
So well over 300, 300 to 400 housing opportunities in that area.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Next will be the applicant's presentation. As a reminder, council members should address their questions to the applicant at the time of their presentation. I will yield the floor to the applicant.
Thank you, Madam President, and members of the Sandpoint City Council. I'm Luke Amit, Bonner County Commissioner, and a city resident and recovering Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commissioner. I'm happy to be here tonight to discuss this important element of our community. The Bonner County Fair has been an important place for our kids to be able and our community and county to celebrate so much of what is right with Bonner County. And as the Bonner County Fair used to also be where our Bonner County Museum is, times change. And times have changed in regards to our current 40 acres. And the example that I will show you is with the Samuelson Right-of-Way. Maybe not because of my technological skill. But the Samuelson Right-of-Way, which was developed with the city, is going to take approximately two acres from the existing property, which if you were to look, it is right here. So this area that is currently used by the fair is going to turn into a road to support those mixed-use properties to the west. And that is going to result in a loss of acreage. That area of the fairgrounds is currently used for rodeo activities. And the fairgrounds parking, we have more use of that facility than we currently have parking. It is very gracious of the Church of Latter-day Saints across the street to volunteer their parking lot. I'm not sure that they're always volunteering, but their spots are well-used. And the economic impact of the fairgrounds is turning more and more into a year-round event. So the commissioners are seeking to adjust this area here and existing use of the Bonner County Sheriff's Office as we look towards the future. Today, in support, if you have engineering questions, I have Jeff Jensen here from Sewell Engineering. And Mr. Jensen is unique in that he has been involved in working with the Fairgrounds project since 2009. So he was the engineer who did the initial work for the campground expansions. Go over there. There are some oddities as we find within our comprehensive plans and within our context areas. Currently, as you can see up here, I have the context area 3. 60 of the 100 acres of this is outside of the city center with the land use designation of context area 3, which is primarily residential. Bonner County is not in the business of building homes. Bonner County Government, we operate based on our statutory expectations and obligations. And one of those is the maintenance of the fairgrounds. And the driver of our request today is for fairground activities with the areas that we have requested. In, I see no immediate future for Bonner County to go into property development. And it is incredible to see what is going on along Samuelson Avenue, and we are working with the City of Sandpoint in that development. Well, the current zoning designation of mixed-use residential allows for several commercial, public, and industrial uses that are in conflict with the land use designation of context area 3 because context area 3 is limited to residential uses only. I cannot state enough that Bonner County is not getting into residential development, but we are most certainly in support of fairground activities. One of the big ones that was brought forward in the staff report is recreation. We live in an incredible place, and we are able to celebrate that 24/7 here, 365. The fairgrounds is an important economic driver. You've got activities from funky junk to the gun and horn show. You have the ski swap. You have a survival expo that is coming forward. And we hope to continue to expand that as our county continues to grow. And that economic development component is a large driver of this. In order for us to be able to fully utilize the fairgrounds, the goal is to work with Sewell Engineering and the appropriate plating of this property. The Bonner County had applied for a grant, and that grant was denied. But we are moving forward because we know in the future there are elements that are going to need to be addressed. What the county has done is we have already addressed the easements for the right-of-way with Samuelson. We are working to take into account the existing uses on the ground, which is where you have the split zoning between the Sheriff's Department and the southeast corner of the fairgrounds. And that was where the planning commission determined that it was an appropriate use. I'll go back up, which is right here. This area that is striped right there, that is a secured area of the Sheriff's Office. Even though it is zoned at this time, rural residential 1, its actual use is that of the sheriff. This area here, which was in contention, by bringing this approximate two acres from mixed-use residential to rural residential 1, what the county is seeking to do is to be able to have that opportunity to support the existing uses of the fairground. And it would provide a consistent zoning for us as we move forward. And we are actually on hold right now with Sewell because we need a decision, so we know where we're going to put the pins and what the colors on the map are going to be. Our goal remains the support of Bonner County's economics. It remains to support the Bonner County fairgrounds. And we have no interest or any future interest at this time as local Bonner County government in getting into residential development on that property. The entirety of that piece is 60 acres, and it will continue to remain in the hands of Bonner County government for a long time. And with that, I would stand for any questions that I have from the board.
I am just curious about, you said that there'll be acreage taken away by the Samuelson easement. Do you know how much?
Approximately two acres, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
Does council have any additional questions for the applicant?
Madam President, just a follow-up. So
an easement, but what is the use for the easement? What do you foresee that being? Is that going to be paved road, or is it going to stay in its current state?
See if I I have the picture, let me ask Melissa how to share this with you.
I have a picture of what it
So counsel rule, what will be happening is Samuelson Addis New at this point extends right. Nope, not me. Uh, it extends to the southwest corner. And this area right in here was actually at one point Bonner County property. But because of that development agreement, it will be turned into roads so that the mixed-use residential housing development that's going to go in this property here will have access. And that's where that loss, this is the two acres that is used for some of the rodeo events and et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Took mine.
Okay, thank you. We will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. If you are participating on Zoom and wish to speak, you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer. If you wish to speak in favor, are neutral, or opposed, I will call for testimony on each. And you will raise your hand on Zoom at that time. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking if you would like to unmute. You will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. As announced earlier, those here in chambers who would like to speak will need to complete a sign-up form available on the table by the door and hand it to staff. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow time to be gifted during a public hearing. I will allow this option this evening. Those present who wish to speak may gift your time to another speaker who was also present in the room. You may also, you may only do so once, and the maximum amount of time any single speaker will be allowed to speak is six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state who has gifted time to you when you approach the dais. You both must have completed a sign-up form. Please note that this ability to give time is allowed only during public hearings. Because this request seeks rezoning of two different parcels, and those testifying may oppose one but favor the other or vice versa, we will take the testimony on each separately, and counsel will deliberate and re- render a decision on each separately. With that, the public hearing is now open. We will begin with the smaller parcel near the playground. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who would like to testify in favor?
Madam President, I will give those on Zoom just a moment to raise a hand if they're interested.
Thank you.
Madam President, no one has uh, signed up or indicated a desire to speak regarding the smaller parcel.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify in favor?
No one has signed up to speak on this item at all.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to testify who is neutral? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak, who would like to testify who is opposed?
Madam President, we do have a hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin.
Hello, I'm assuming that you can hear me. My name for the record is Wayne Martin. Uh, I am opposed to any of the property being changed or given over out of the justice system complex over to the Fair Board, knowing that the Fair Board at this time does not have any uh, wish, desire to obtain any of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm against it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak regarding this parcel? Thank you. We will now take testimony regarding the larger parcel on the west side. Madam Clerk, is there anyone who would like to testify in favor?
No, Madam President.
Is there anyone who would like to testify who is neutral?
No.
Is there anyone who would like to testify who is opposed?
Yes, Madam President. Daryl Wheeler?
Well, good evening, uh, counsel, and uh, my, for the record, my name is Daryl Wheeler, Sheriff Daryl Wheeler. I will like to note that only two of the three commissioners approved this application. I do support uh, the July eighteenth Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of denial of the approximately two point two acres of the Bonner County Redna Center, Block One, uh, and Lot One rezoned from RR one to M U R. Because it did not fit the city's comprehensive plan, may have unattended consequences, and the county fair board should be consulted. One of those unattended consequences would be a devaluation of the two point two acres. During the July eighteenth Planning and Zoning Hearing, one of the commissioners remarked that a change of zoning from M U R to RR one would devalue the land because RR one allows for lower-density housing. I have reviewed the proposed application requirements process instruction pertaining to the Sandpoint City rezone application filed by Bonner County Commissioner Luke Ommitt. Per Idaho Code twenty-two dash two oh two, two oh four, Luke Ommitt lacks the statutory authority to be the exclusive applicant for the proposed land use change. Idaho Code twenty-two oh four requires that the city, that the county fair board be part of the fairgrounds-related land use planning activities. Therefore, the county fair board is a necessary party to this application. County property used for fairgrounds is included under property information noted up, up, on the application parcel, which says fairgrounds, and it is the application that the road fairgrounds. The mere fact that the city's rezone application requests the simple owner applicant to indemnify the city for its wrongs does not absolve the city from illegally processing the land use change in contravention to Idaho statute. Uh, Idaho Code twenty-two oh four talks about the duties of the fair board, bonds of meetings. Further duties of the fair board shall be in charge with the care and custody of all property belonging to the county and used for fair purposes, and shall be responsible for all monies levied by it raised by tax levy or levies for the purposes, as well as all respects for the operation of the fair and any other money received from any sources of the purpose. An additional requirement noted in the proposed rezone application and process instruction is a required letter of explanation and justification for the proposed project. In the submitted application packet by Luke Ommitt, he stated the need to rezone the fairgrounds property was to extend the existing RV camp spots located on the fairgrounds. There is no longer that need. The request for the extension of the grant
That is three minutes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Um, Cheryl Kins has uh, agreed to give me her three minutes. She's
Uh, Sheriff Wheeler, uh, the name of the individual?
Cheryl, Cheryl Messer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Uh, there is no longer that need. The request for the extension of the grant was denied on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And the detailed letter of explanation submitted by James Sewell and Associates LLC on June eighth, twenty-three is no longer applicable to the request. That coupled with the stated opposition of the campground expansion by the Bonner County Fair Board thus eliminates the need for a rezone for this property. In conclusion, I do not support the approval of this rezon. The City of Sandpoint Council should deny the rezon because the applicant Luke Ommitt had acted in excess of statutory authority and illegally usurped the authority of the Bonner County Fair Board. By approving this rezon, the city will be participating in the, in devaluing the county property, which will have a negative impact on county taxpayers. Further, the City of Sandpoint should be, should not be complicit in a violation of Idaho state law simply because it's indemnified by the county. Keeping this uh, designation M U, M U R does not prohibit its current use or any expansion. And I ask that you deny this uh, for the sake of the county taxpayers and for the sake of also uh, for the following case law or Idaho law, and it should, you should be including the fair board based on statute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Wheeler. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else who would like to testify who is opposed?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak regarding this parcel?
Madam President, we do have a late hand raised on Wayne Martin. Thank you.
Wayne Martin, for the record, uh, I will state that Sheriff Wheeler does have a map that shows what had been planned for the justice complex, that part of that property that is being proposed to be included with what you are looking at. Uh, I have a concern about that. I know the county commissioners have commented about, you know, well, when will you find that amount of money to ever be able to do that? If the probably defender's property, the prosecutor's offices were sold along with the courthouse, which is outdated and is not functional properly for the trials and other events that have to take place, also the offices for the judges was also sold. That would more than likely be able to allow the proper buildings to go on the justice complex. It may not replace the jail, but it would be able to take care of the courthouse and the offices that those two groups might have or need. The courthouse, the sheriff's office are supposed to stay in the seat of the county government. And the fairgrounds does not have to stay in Sandpoint. If the property that keeps being taken away or between the city and the county allowing to be developed across the street where they're building a storage unit that could have been parking for the courthouse to the one side where there's homes being put in, that would have allowed expansion for the justice system. There's property that these county has annexed from Priest River that could end up easily taking over for a fairgrounds, possibly uh, Ponderay. But any of this would end up decreasing the amount of traffic and the economic traffic that would come to Sandpoint. And again, the fair board does not support any of this. Um, so thank you for your time, and I am very much opposed to what is being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Madam President, may I uh, address Mr. Martin with a quick question for the record? Uh, Mr. Martin, are you a city resident?
No, I am not.
Okay, it's just something that we collect for the record here at the room, and I didn't know on Zoom, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
No, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Uh, does counsel have any additional questions?
They asked if I was a city resident. I had to fill
Oops. Uh, does, does counsel have any additional questions at this time?
Can we approach Mr. Ommitt? Or is it for?
Just for staff, right?
It's just for staff.
Yeah. Um, I, I do, Madam President.
Okay.
A couple of questions. Um, this is for our city attorney, uh, Mr. Jones. Uh, Mr. Jones, the, the sheriff um, claimed that the rezon application is actually illegal under state statute because the uh, commissioner doesn't have authority to apply on behalf of the county. Can you clarify that for us a little bit? Is, is this an illegal rezon application?
So, yes, I will be happy to clarify that. Um, to be clear, is my understanding that the public hearing is still, still going on?
I'm sorry.
And so I think the next step is to allow Mr. O'Mott to
Or rebuttal.
By rebuttal.
Okay, before the public hearing is closed, uh, would the applicant care to offer any rebuttal testimony? Just a reminder that if any new facts are elicited during rebuttal, the public may be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts.
Thank you, Madam President. This is uh, Title Thirty-One, Counties and County Law, Chapter Eight, Powers and Duty of Board of Commissioners. The Management of County Property. A board of county commissioners shall have the power and authority to purchase, receive by donation, or lease any real or personal property necessary for the use of the county. Here is Idaho Code twenty-two dash two zero four, and this is actually Title Twenty-two is agriculture, agriculture and horticulture, excuse me. Chapter two is county fair boards. And it is an important distinction for people to know. The Board of County Commissioners is responsible for certain elements. The county fair board is a unique quasi-judicial all sorts of stuff within the state of Idaho. I just came from Boise yesterday. There are forty-four counties in our state. Every county has a different way of running their fair. However, Idaho Code is quite clear. And this is county fair boards. It shall take charge of and manage all such property as the county may have acquired or set aside for fair purposes pursuant to the provisions of Section Thirty-one dash eight twenty-two. Title Thirty-one is Counties and County Law again. Chapter eight is the powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners. And it makes quite clear in this, the Board of County Commissioners of any county owning any grounds or parks with or without buildings and improvements thereon held and maintained for public fairs or exhibitions may the ground that the fair operates on is Bonner County property. The ground that the sheriff's office sits upon is Bonner County property. As stated in my earlier testimony, the reason why the Board of County Commissioners is interested in this rezon is it provides Bonner County the greatest opportunity to be able to utilize this property, especially considering the loss of the acreage with the expanded growth of our county at four percent. There's just more and more cars. We do not have the parking for the events that are there now. We are in support of this because it provides a more uniform use of the land, and it would provide conformity within the comprehensive plan. I would take any questions that you may have.
Madam President, um, is there a reason that the fair board was not involved in this uh, with, with you?
I'm not speaking for the fair board, but in regards to the, we are the real property owners, the Board of County Commissioners under Thirty-one dash eight zero seven, and that, that's the reason why. We're the ones who have to answer to the taxpayer about what's going on with their tax dollars.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Counselor.
Thanks for being here. Uh, so as I'm thinking here, does the fair have any idea how long that they're going to stay at the fairgrounds? Is there any plan for the fairground to move anywhere else like one of the comments had made?
That has been discussed by a number of people. Um, looking at the cost of dirt in Bonner County. For us to get forty acres is not something that this commissioner is prepared to ask our, our taxpayers. There is zero interest at this time. We're talking about millions of dollars. The, and that's just for the ground. Uh, when the fair moved from city limits, because the city no longer allowed the county to lease that ground, we actually received grants from the Kennedy administration to be able to build the main exhibit hall. So just in deferred maintenance and et cetera, we're looking at a huge capital outlay of tax dollars. And speaking only for myself as an individual commissioner, so not for the board, there is no appetite, and that is something that would require a, a vote of the county, so.
There was a follow-up statement, so I can appreciate you being here. Those are follow-up statements, so I can appreciate you being here and defending and fighting for our fair. I think that everybody here loves going to the fair for a variety of different reasons. This, and I'll have a question for staff in a minute, this is an old fashioned turf war and I would really prefer the city to not be involved in this. And I understand that it's in front of us now. I, I would like to know how many more problematic pieces of property that we have in relation to this as a problem, not your question to answer. But I do appreciate you standing up for our fair.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I thought I heard a comment made that the fairgrounds not interested in this property being changed or rezoned, is that correct? Are you aware of that? Because I, I'm, I'm here in defending the fairground or protecting the fairground, but maybe it's not something. Are you aware of that?
I'm not prepared to speak for the fair board counselor. I will tell you that when I spoke with them in January and February and as their minutes will reflect, they were very eager to participate in this project. So this commissioner is not prepared to speak for the fair board. That would be a question better left for them.
Thank you.
Madam President, this question would be for counsel to, um, I know Luke spoke to this with his rebuttal. I guess I, we have to close the rebuttal. Okay, sorry, out of place question.
Madam President, I do have one more question for Commissioner Omet. Uh, Luke, I hear two in, in this, this, maybe I should have asked the, the sheriff Wheeler this question as well, but on one hand, I hear protecting, leaving this as mixed use residential is protecting Bonner County taxpayers. On the other hand, rezoning this to sync of our, our, our one would allow for an economic use that is not currently available thereby perhaps relieving taxpayers in some way. What, what's the commissioner's argument for rezoning this property? I, I'm, I'm, for, for the sake of taxpayers, I mean, what, what is the commissioner's argument for, for this rezon request?
To begin with, as a, as another political entity, there is no local taxes that are collected from Bonner County from the city of Sandpoint. All of Sandpoint resides within Bonner County. All of our thirteen municipalities reside within counties. So there is no intergovernmental transfer. However, the economic benefit of, if you see the number of skis that are about to be slung throughout that door or the number of firearm, firearms at the horn and gun show, or if we're looking at the number of elephant ears, lions, tigers and bears on my that take place at the fair. And you see funky junk, which had approximately five thousand people. Where you look at the Ren Fair, which had almost ten thousand people. For every dollar that is brought into our county where people come and they spend money in support of Sandpoint, whether they're from Montana, whether they're from Washington, that's jobs, that is taxes and that is what feeds families. So one of them is an economic incubator and the other one is a field that lies fallow.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr. Omet.
Thank you, Madam President.
With all who wish to testify.
If new information was presented, then we can reopen the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I would say that, that there was at least mention of Title thirty-one. And so there probably was new information that had not been introduced at the original hearing, so I do think that the public hearing should be reopened.
Okay, we will reopen the public hearing at this time. And then do I ask for testimony?
Yes, specific to the new information that was, was introduced, which was the argument on Title thirty-one and perhaps some of the other economic arguments that were introduced in the rebuttal testimony from Commissioner Oma.
Is there new testimony regarding Article thirty-one at this time, the new information that was presented by Mr. Omet? Does she need to fill out a?
Yes, I have that.
Okay.
Give me one moment, please.
Okay, Cheryl Messer, I'm not a resident of Sandpoint, but of Bonner County. Title thirty-one two zero zero nine, offices to be kept at the county seat, office hours. Sheriff's, Recorders, Treasurers, Assessors, and in counties having a population of over seven thousand five hundred, prosecuting attorneys must have their offices at the county seat. I won't read the rest of it. Idaho District Courts are also located in the county seats. So, um, relative to taxpayers and money, we also would lose, the county would lose from a justice center, a portion of land also. So the two acres would be taken off that and given to the fairground. Along with, we have the Samuels Road that go, avenue that goes right by the sheriff's department too, so that's also taken off. And although there's been no formal study of current needs or a plan finalized from a study that delivers what the county public services will need in the future. There's been much talk of it. There's been descriptions of stuff. I could get, go through county commissioners and what they've said and what the plan has been in saving that land. And it, and we have to be in, I also work for the sheriff's office. So we have to plan for the future. And we have to be in the city limits. The courthouse has to be, the prosecuting attorney's office, the public defender's office, all of those. The plan was to bring them all under one roof and it would save money that, from doing that. And with all the growth that we're having, there's going to be we're already in my opinion, we are maxed out in many areas. So where do we buy property if we need it? And how much will that cost the taxpayer? One of the comments from Dan McDonald was that getting out of the courthouse, getting out of the prosecutor's office, getting out of the public defender's office, put everything out of, out on your guys' property, so we have a justice facility that includes the jail. Will actually save money overall per square foot. But if you talk about adding property costs, the cost of property and infrastructure to the cost of the building. And Sheriff Wheeler had said at one point, if you do not abandon this proposal, you'll be saddling future residents of Bonner County with a hefty tax bill.
Thank you, Ms. Messer.
Now I would just ask counsel president to keep the rebuttal testimony or the public hearing testimony to the new evidence that was introduced by Commissioner Oma.
Will you be speaking on the new testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yeah, Sheriff Darryl Wheeler, for the record, there has been new, um, new information brought by the, by Commissioner Omet. And there was questions by Councilman Esparro that were not answered, I think honestly. He asked if the fair board was against this. And about two years ago, two and a half years ago, uh, there was some minutes saying that the fair board was advised, but there was never a vote. And there has been numerous letters sent to the commissioners by the council and by the prosecutor's office, saying that the fair board does not want to pursue the, the thirty-four space RV park. They are against it. Uh, part of the state statute is that they're supposed to adopt a plan and give that plan to the commissioners. And the commissioners are supposed to start that. As Commissioner Omet said, the fair board is a quasi governmental agency and they're independent from like the planning and zoning or other uh, boards that the county operates. So they are independent, they make that decision. And when they wrote the state and asked them to deny and to cancel that uh, grant that was going to be building those thirty-four, um, those letters were transmitted to the commissioners. And Mr. Omet was part of those transmissions, so he does know that the fair board said they want nothing and they want nothing to do with this. And they were against it. So, and I also want to note that the legal opinion that I wrote and cited came from the prosecutor's office. There is very, there's a lot of transmissions and communications going back from the fair board and the legal representative who's from the prosecutor's office, saying that there is not uh, standing for them to do this and to continue this. And I just, I'd just like to say really based just on, this doesn't fit in the city's comprehensive plan. As, as Councilman Grove said, this is a turf war that we're involved in, but I think it's easy for this uh, this board to make a decision that, that of denying the larger piece because it doesn't fit within the comprehensive plan of the city. And if we're going to follow comprehensive plans, we should follow the advice of the planning and zoning board. And we should deny this, this proposal. If another one needs to be made to include the fair board and that's how they want to proceed, then they can follow the law and they can submit another application. At this point, nothing changes by you denying this, this rezon except um, you're just following your comprehensive plan. Thank you, Madam Chair and City Councilman.
Thank you, Sheriff Wheeler. Is there anyone else who wants to give any testimony based on the new information?
Madam President, have someone raise a hand on Zoom.
Thank you.
Wayne Martin.
Wayne Martin, for the record, I believe that this falls in the area. While the property in question is currently allowed to be used by the fairgrounds as overflow parking. Uh, and RR one that Benjamin Omont, uh, was talking about the consideration for the RV park. Uh, the current RV park area can increase the number of spaces that are needed without a campground going where they're talking or had considered before. Uh, a concern that I would have as a residence, because I, I hear about the money, the money, the money. The current campground is not a hundred percent occupied during the spring, summer months. And to say that it's overflowing and the need for that is not true, especially this year. Uh, during the special events, yes, it is overflowing. As to parking, it's, it's always been a problem because it's not a paved parking lot. It is not marked or designated parking spaces. Sometimes people take a space and a half. So yes, there are problems. All the roads are a problem, uh, which is part of economics and all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
No, no other hands raised on Zoom, Madam President.
With all those who wish to testify, having had an opportunity to do so.
Madam President?
Yes.
Point of order for our city attorney, please.
Yes.
Is there an additional rebuttal period?
I do think it's appropriate because it is the applicant's motion that he has the final word.
Okay.
And so I do think that, but I, I would ask Madam President to counsel the applicant to not expand beyond the evidence that was presented to this point.
Mr. Omet, do you have anything to rebuttal? That would not go beyond?
I have Mr. Jones here working since, on that project since two thousand. I know, Madam President.
Thank you. With all who wish to testify, having had the opportunity to do so, the public hearing is now closed. No new information may be provided and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. Counselors, sample motions have been provided on the dais.
Madam President?
Yes.
Are we asking staff questions or are we going to do that after a motion is made?
Now is the time.
As well, counsel president, I think that counsel Welker had a question.
Sure, I'll go back to that one. So Sheriff Wheeler claimed that the, as we just heard quite a bit of testimony on as well, uh, that the commissioner does not have the authority to apply for this reason on behalf of the county. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Certainly. It's our opinion that the Board of the County Commissioners are the appropriate applicant in this case. Um, that's, that reasoning is twofold. Uh, first of all, the larger parcel is not currently governed in any way by the fairgrounds. That's currently governed by the, by the county in general. And so that argument regarding Title twenty-two, Chapter two oh four is a little bit of a red herring when it comes to the larger parcel. However, even if Chapter twenty-two, two oh four were applicable, it's our opinion that the, that section provides that the um, Board of County Commissioners has ownership control over that property. And in fact, that code section requires the Board of County Commissioners to designate the location of the fair. And the, uh, fair board is required and shall conduct their business at that location. And so while twenty-two, two zero four does provide a unique amount of managing control to the county fair board, the ownership control certainly still relies in the hands of the Bonner Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Uh, that's what I wanted clarified, so thank you.
Um, okay. I have another question. This one's probably for Amy. The and I've had this sheet in front of me tonight. Uh, maybe I'll pull it back up, but the allowed uses under M U R do not currently allow for expansion of fairground facilities. Is that correct, Amy?
Correct.
But under RR one, expansion of fairground facilities is permitted.
As a conditional use.
As a conditional use. So any, any proposed expansion of facilities of any type, whether it's a campground or whatever, the county, along with the fair board or, and or the fair board decide to do with a potentially rezoned two acre parcel in the future would have to come back before city council, or I guess it'd go to planning and zoning for a, a conditional use permit.
Correct.
And there would need to be a whole other round of public input and involvement before any actual expansion could take place, correct? Okay, so this is literally the only thing we're deciding on today is whether this rezon request is, you know, we're able to approve that based on our comp plan and the different conditions that we've been presented with here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Parcel number one. Let's begin with deliberation regarding the smaller parcel south of the playground. Counselors, is there any deliberation or questions for staff? On the smaller portion.
Madam President? I might ask that Amy puts up that picture, just so the public is clear on what we're debating. Those in the room probably are, but maybe those in Zoom are not. Um, and then clarification that there is a built fence that already encompasses that into the, um, let's call it the DMV area, um, that is M U R, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd be ready to make a motion on this particular request. I would move the Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Bonner County for a zone change from rural residential one to mixed use resident, mixed use residential for a portion of property defined as tax parcel number RPS zero 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 three six six zero one A with the development agreement that requires a plating action to correspond to the portion of the property to be rezoned in concurrence with consideration of the rezon. The recommendation is based on the findings that the proposed zone change is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Um, it does, although it, it does allow for a wide range of housing, but I think what we're really hearing is that there's a, an existing use that's not in conformance with the existing zoning. And I think it just makes sense for us to approve this request to bring the existing use into conformance with our zoning code. Um, the proposed M U R zone with conditions incorporated into a development agreement regarding the need for a plating action is consistent and compatible with existing zoning. the need for a plating action is consistent and compatible with existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. The M U R zone is consistent with existing public safety facilities on county-owned property and residential uses across North Wire Road. Particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the planning jurisdiction. And the requested rezoning is a small area that will bring the existing public safety uses into conformance while having no impact on the school district. And finally, staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho Code sixty-seven, sixty-five, eleven and Sandpoint, Sandpoint City Code Title nine, Chapter nine.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Counsel will now need to vote on an ordinance and a resolution. Now that it is approved. Implementation of this rezone requires the passage of an ordinance as provided in the meeting packet. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending the zoning classification of the property described in Section one of the ordinance from rural residential one, RR1, to mixed-use residential, M U R, providing for amendment to the official zoning map to reflect this change, finding that the new zone is in accord with the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section one of the ordinance are hereby superseded and providing for publication and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules.
So moved. Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Madam President, who was the motion? Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes. The motion passed in this ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under the suspension of the rules. As provided in the meeting packet and as the final action regarding this rezone, council will now consider the zoning development agreement for this property. I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution for the zoning agreement with Bonner County for the rezoning of a portion of Bonner County parcel, R P S zero 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 three six six zero one A from rural residential one, RR1, to multi-use residential, M U R.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Motion passes. Parcel number two, we will now move on to deliberation and a decision regarding the second parcel, which is the larger parcel on the west side. Counselors, is there any deliberation or questions for staff?
Madam President, if you mind. I was, as we all went back and watched the planning and zoning, I want to thank them for their very thoughtful discussion on this as well. But what we have before us, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, is we are looking at a rezone case with all potential possibilities in that specific area of the rezone under today's current comprehensive plan, correct? In watching the planning and zoning, it looked like there was, some of them were getting tripped up in terms of what we may by approving the rezone restrict for future development in this property. When I look at the map and I see context to Area Three in this, on this property, it makes sense for many years down the road, but it doesn't necessarily make sense today. And I think there's reasonable arguments to be made on both sides that would fit in our current comprehensive plans and the goals of our comprehensive plans. Which leads me to my thought process that we are dealing with the fairgrounds and the readiness center currently under today's comp plan. Twenty years down the road, if the fairgrounds finds another piece of property or the readiness center finds another piece of property, whatever restrictions may come from this rezone, right? You're going to probably have a new developer, a new occupant, a new owner that would come back and rezone this property to be more, more in line with what they want to do with the property and foreseeable, maybe houses, multifamily. You've got the Samuelson Project. I am compelled to approve the rezoning of this piece of property from M U R to RR1. And doing it today, if our legal counsel has said what they've said and Commissioner Ommett does have the authority to apply for this rezone without the fair board, why not do the rezone now and it aligns the properties in which we're looking at with the current occupants there? And I don't find it to be any more or less restrictive twenty years down the road if these two groups are not on this piece of property. Does that make sense? Do some of you? Or do you understand where I'm, where I'm going with this? I don't think denying this now is going to change what happens twenty years down the road if the sheriff's readiness center is not there or the fairgrounds has found another piece of property. Whoever owns that property when those two are gone, if they're still there or not, will apply for a rezone as well as we need to see a C U P that would come back to planning and zoning if there was any development in this area anyway. And I don't believe whatever might get built there would hinder projects twenty years down the road when we may need more workforce of housing or affordable housing or more park space as we move forward. And, and that's why I'm compelled to move and approve this rezone this evening.
Going to make a motion.
Does anybody else have deliberation?
I, I'll make a couple of comments. Look, we've heard rezone requests over the years. We generally approve them as long as they don't grossly violate the visions of our comp plan and in, in, in a couple of cases, we've denied them. But there were really solid tangible reasons for doing so, such as vicinity to the airport, which is a really important one. We know how much we value the airport here. As far as I understand, the, the, any proposed use, in fact, downzoning this to RR1 would, you know, please airport folks, I'm assuming, although I don't think it's on their radar, pun intended. But, look, I, I think that the, the fact that like two-thirds of this plot of Bonner County land is already RR1. Are, are we saying if by denying this, would we be saying that the existing zoning is out of conformance with our comp plan? I mean, that argument could be made. But I agree with a lot of what Councilman Dick said about this, we're not obligating or committing to any development on this property by approving a rezone request. And generally speaking, in, in the last four years that I've been involved up here, we don't deny rezone requests unless there is some, you know, justifiable reason within the language of our comp plan. But in this case, there's quite a bit of language in our comp plan that I believe justifies this, this request, particularly around preserving open space and around supporting partnerships that provide economic development opportunities. So the, the, the simple fact of the matter from my viewpoint is that there is a there's a piece of land owned by the county that is not able to be used for what the majority of the county commissions express desired use of that land is. By approving a rezone, we'd, we'd be basically sticking with precedent that we've developed up here over the years to support rezone requests that don't go against our comp plan, but also allow for the desired use of the landowner on that property. Let's see, I had some more notes here. Yeah, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that. And the fact that, see, I mean, this is again, when conditional uses, when, when future uses conditioned on a permit, this will be something that will come up in the future if, if any, you know, proposed development of this property were to occur in the future.
Any other comments?
Sure, I would just kind of concur with both council members who already have spoken. There's sort of arguments in both direction. It's not clearly outlined by our comprehensive plan. Things depending on ownership can be rezoned just because it's zone one way today doesn't mean the county cannot come back and change the zone again if their future plans change. Ultimately, I think as Councilman Dick mentioned, you know, we have to think twenty, thirty, forty years down the road. What are the uses and how do they best suit the citizens of standpoint if this land were to change hands? So I don't know if that's adding a lot more information, but I guess I'm agreeing with you in both ways. This could go either way, in my opinion. So I'm appreciating all the testimony.
If I could add on one thing, you know, Justin talked about future uses possibly coming with future reason requests. That, that applies very much to the Justice Center as well. I listened to everything Ms. Messer said, and I, I actually agree one hundred percent that it makes sense to consolidate our justice services. That it doesn't seem like there's a, a short-term plan to do that. But when we talk about the long term, this, this could just as easily be rezoned to a use or to a, a zoning jurisdiction that would allow for expansion of the justice complex as well. So I don't think we're precluding that possibility in the future by making a decision today. Just like we're not precluding, you know, twenty, thirty years down the road, there being workforce housing on this property if the county were to sell all this land.
Madam President, the, after looking at my notes, the one other comment that and maybe it's just something to put out there to the public is that somebody did mention schools. And as we do grow, I'm sure the school system could tell you that we are going to need another school. And there's property here that maybe through agreements in the future that could also happen. So I think it's important that we, we take that into account as we build out as developers and others build out the rest of this town to kind of keep that use in mind also.
Thank you. Anything else? I will entertain a motion.
Make the motion. I move that the Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Bonner County for a zone change from rural residential one to mixed-use residential for a portion of the property identified as tax parcel number, R P S zero 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 three six six zero one A with the development agreement that requires plating action to correspond with the portion of excuse me, oh my, oh my apologies, apologies, I had the wrong one in my head. I move that the Sandpoint City Council, after consideration of the criteria and relevant standards of Idaho Code and Sandpoint City Code, approve the request by Bonner County for a zone change from mixed-use residential to rural residential one for a portion of property identified as tax parcel number, R P S three eight three five zero zero one zero zero one A A with a development agreement that requires a plating action to correspond with the portion of the property to be rezoned in concurrence with the consideration of the rezone. The recommendation is based in the findings that the proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it supports recreational goal R one, policy E, and recreational recreation goal R three, policy B, by allowing uses such as parks and fairgrounds that provide recreational facilities and opportunities for open space for residents and economic development goal E one, policy B, by allowing uses that support local artisans and farmers and public services goal A, because of the lower density allowed under RR1 would have less impact on schools, considers the impact on the school district by allowing lower density residential. Two, the proposed RR1 zone with conditions incorporated into a development agreement regarding the need for a plating action is consistent and compatible with the existing zoning and future land uses in the vicinity of the site. The rezone is extending the current RR1 zoning would allow uses compatible with what currently exists on the county-owned property and would allow other uses that are also compatible with the surrounding uses. Three, particular consideration has been given to the effects of this proposed zone change upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public service, services within the planning jurisdiction because the rezoning would allow lower density residential that would have reduced impact on the public schools as well as the potential for a school location. Excuse me. The rezoning would allow for additional parks and open spaces, police and fire stations, public utility facilities, and expansion of the fairground facilities. And four, staff has followed the notice, the notice procedures applicable to zone changes contained in Idaho Code six seven dash six five one one and the Sandpoint City Code Title nine, Chapter nine.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
No.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Implementation of this rezone requires the passage of an ordinance as provided in the meeting packet. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the City of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending the zoning classification of the property described in Section one of the ordinance from mixed-use residential, M U R, to rural residential one, RR1, providing for amendment to the official zoning map to reflect this change, finding that the new zone is in accord with the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section one of the ordinance are hereby superseded and providing for publication and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes. The motion passed in this ordinance, ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. As provided in the meeting packet and as the final action regarding this rezone, council will now consider the zoning development agreement for this property. I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution for the zoning agreement with Bonner County for the rezoning of a portion of Bonner County parcel, R P S three eight three five zero zero one zero zero one A A from multi-use residential, M U R, to rural residential, one, RR1.
So moved.
Second. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are going to take a short recess. It is now two minutes to seven P M. We will reconvene in five minutes at seven oh five. This meeting is now reconvened at seven ten P M. Because there are new people in the audience, I will repeat the rules up for participation during our meeting. Those in attendance shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, use threatening or abusive language, hold up or display any type of sign, speak out of turn, or clap, or engage in any other similar act which disturbs the meeting. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public portion of the meeting. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to myself or the council or staff and do not approach the dais. Also, please do not approach the clerk or staff up here at the front tables as this disrupts the meetings. You may inquire of staff at the back table who can provide assistance if needed. Unless otherwise provided, each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes. When it is your turn to speak, please introduce yourself and state whether you reside within the city limits. For the final item this evening, council will consider approval of change order number two to the agreement with Gino Construction Company for Travers Park renovations, Phase One, C M slash G C Services City Agreement Number two three dash five three zero zero dash five. This change order is a continuation of the construction phase of this project and addresses building fabrication and installation, structure anchor bolts, site improvement. structure anchor bolts, site improvements and the associated construction management, general contractor fee, excuse me. I will now yield the floor to Parks Planning and Development Manager Maeve Nevins-Lavtar.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with a small presentation. All right, so on the screen we have a repeat of what you just heard from Madam President. This is the overview of the Travers Park and this is phase one of the renovations. Tonight with me, we have my architects from ALSC Architects. I have Reston Hall and Gail Stanley on online and available to answer questions. And as well, Jennifer Stapleton, City Administrator, she is our project director and also may answer questions as well as Mr. Russell, our donor. He is on, I believe, as well and may answer questions in addition. So to start off, as you know, I really wanted to be here back in June and we had full intentions of kicking off groundbreaking then. But we are entering, if you haven't heard, we're entering a very hostile construction market. And there's a couple key factors for that. Number one, and through and key factors for our delay. Number one, there's been significant delays in availability of supply items, particularly as it relates to electrical and HVAC items. So the team has been looking at that supply chain, reevaluating what is available, what can we get and what can we achieve the goals of this project with what is out there. Secondly, there's a shortage of subcontractors available and especially when you're looking to bid in Sandpoint in June, it's arguably one of the worst times to start a project. So we're now in a more opportune moment to enter into construction and crews are starting to finish up and shifting over and we're trying to maximize that opportunity before they shut down for winter. And in this case, the portion of the project that we are moving forward with is essentially the site development package. It includes the foundation, the footers, the concrete, and then also the legacy building structure itself. As you may recall, there was a change order number one, which included the engineering for the legacy building structure. And this portion of that would essentially give authorization for them to move ahead with ordering the steel, which is a critical path item, as well as moving forward with construction. And the plan is for, as their system, is for legacy to the manufacturer and the installer to come out as soon as the foundation and the footers and everything are in. There was utilities included in that, particularly the underground utilities and the sleeving for those utilities. So essentially, the goal is right now to get everything in the ground that we possibly can with the intent to build, to frame in and build the structure over the winter. And then we'll shift over in the spring towards the landscaping and the Gateway Plaza. This is bid set number one. There will be a second bid set coming out probably in in November, we're anticipating. And so I will be back here in a couple of months with that as well. And that will include the remainder of the phase one renovations. On the screen is just a recap of the development process so far. We don't normally get into this, but because we've been working on this project, I've been working on this for almost two years now and you all have been working on this for a year and a half. This is just a refresher of all the adopted resolutions and the timeline. So we we started with back in September of twenty twenty and and really way before my time, there was the Park and Rec Master Plan that was adopted and over two years of public participate, public participation in that process. And if you recall at that time, the Travers Park concept was identified as well as the identification of an enclosed tennis facility for that park. And then in the fall of twenty twenty one, we were approached by the Russell family and at the same time I had been brought on board as the Park Planning Manager. And the intent of my role, one of my main goals is to implement the park plan. And so it was perfect timing for the Russells to approach the city with a potential donation. And we aligned them with this opportunity for the tennis facility to be enclosed. And so it took a few months to get through the initial scoping and figure out how much it could cost. And at the time, remember, we were just coming out of COVID. So at the time, I scoped it in around December of twenty twenty one. So the the amount that we have in hand, the seven point five million, which was the original donation, that amount was established and identified in the scope from twenty twenty one and we have not increased the budget at all. So my team has been working extremely hard on value engineering. And I want to say a very special thank you to city staff. What you don't know is that behind myself and Jennifer is a team here at the city who, all the way down to the folks in the field, the utility workers and the linemen who have been looking at these plans and looking at ways to creatively find funding to be able to make this project work within the budget that was established in twenty twenty one. So I really want to extend a gratitude to them and recognize my entire team. And then also the creativity from the ALSC Architects, D C I engineers and M W engineers. They've been with us since the beginning as well. And they were part of the original contract to Emmerich Construction for the design build contract back in July of twenty twenty two. So we've had that same design team persevering with us since the very beginning. And then going back to the timeline in over, you know, between July of twenty twenty two and February of twenty twenty three, we we were able to look at the entire park and and reevaluate and reconfigure the master plan to make it optimized for this incredible gift and opportunity. And also explore ways to minimize impact to users through this phased development. In March of twenty twenty three, so just a few months ago, we were we were able to hire Gino Construction for the what we refer to as the construction management and general contractor services contract. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. You approve the resolution for that and what we've completed to date is the construction services where essentially we've been developing the design. The design has been tracking along at the same time, but like I said, we focused over the last few months on the foundation set and the critical path items. And that's what we're looking at with this change order. We are still reviewing the drawing set at a hundred percent drawings now. They are being reviewed by our city staff and our technical advisors. So some of the drawings that were included in the change order, we included those so that the whole picture was given to the the contractor community for bidding. But some of those items, such as the tree protection plan and the planting plan, the landscaping plan, the final playground, all of that is was still being finalized. And I know that I've I've fielded some questions from some of you in regards to that. So anyway, then it brings us to May, just this past May, where we unveiled the final design to the community when we had our open house at Travers Park and then that evening we had it at city council. So that's the design that we're moving forward with, the exception of some of the value engineering items. And we've been fleshing that out as we speak. Simultaneously, the Pondory Peddlers have moved forward. They have a bike skills project going on there. Sorry, Bike Skills Park project going on. It's a renovation of an existing bike skills course that's there. That is scheduled to begin construction in October and I will be back at the next meeting too. Or October eighteenth, I believe, to discuss the project manage, management methods with that project. But I wanted to let you know that that is moving forward. In addition, back when we were able to hire Gino, we also and retain ALSC, we were also to retain Dreamland Skate Parks and they are our skate park design build company. And that project is moving along as well. And I will point out, they have an upcoming fundraiser. I believe it's this weekend. It's the king of the concrete. And if you haven't gone before, it's great fun. And they are actively fundraising for the skate park. So we have a ways to go. We need a good chunk of money and you're gonna hear about that quite extensively in in the parks world. But please come out for that and support the skaters because as you know, the skaters, they really, really, really could use your support. Let's see here. So concluding, so we did have one change order and that was for the engineering for the legacy building structure. That was in April. So we've been plugging along on this. And today is for the amended team or for the amended change order.
Can I just add a couple other things on that aren't necessarily council timeline, but timelines that we've had coinciding with all of this. In at the time that we awarded the contract to Emmerich, so that would be back in twenty twenty two, we applied for and received a technical assistance grant through the U S Tennis Association. And that is for design review of the project. So one of the things that's been happening throughout the summer as well, and we don't control the timeline, is back and forth with our fifty percent plans, our ninety five percent plans and our hundred percent plans as they're being developed by our design team for those to go through the U S T A for their construction design team. So they have engineers on their side and they're looking at guidelines through U S T A design standards that they have adopted and ensuring that our building is in compliance and providing us feedback on that. We have received all of the feedback to date relative to the foundation and building structure. And with that, we are in compliance with all the guidelines. We're working on just a couple of items right now with U S T A pretty much related just to the lighting right now. And some of the standards and some questions related to photometrics. So they ask us questions. We have to get it back to them. That's two weeks to review and there's kind of a back and forth. So on some of the interior finishes, particularly the lighting right now, there's still some back and forth to U S T A. And we expect to get across the finish line of that in the next couple of weeks. But for this this change order that is before you, we are through all of those reviews with U S T A. In addition to that, I would just note that we also engaged back in the spring of twenty twenty two, Barry Dunn and you've seen Art Thatcher and Lisa and a few other members of this team at council meetings in the past. And we engaged them to ensure that we were building a facility in compliance with standards, playable standards. We were considering, we were considering operations and we were considering a design that was conducive to general community use to pickleball as well as to tennis. So they've been involved with us throughout the process and presented at previous council meetings. And we don't have them on board tonight, but the next phase of their engagement is really getting into the operations planning. And we kind of put a pause on that as we were trying to finalize all of the design and get through all of those reviews approvals and get through our value engineering. So we'll be picking up on that as we get moving forward with the actual construction phase in the ground.
Thank you. Jennifer, would you mind speaking to, didn't you tell me that U S T A also does the technical reviews for USA?
Correct, correct. So, thank you Maeve. So the Pickleball Association, you might be wondering why we're going to U S T A and why not, you're not hearing about like a USPA. And the reason for that is U S T A does the reviews for both tennis and pickleball. And they had clarified that for us in writing. So they're looking at both sides, both uses of both sports as this review is going through them.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the team, the bubble, the yellow bubble or orange bubble, however you can see the color, is to highlight what we're focusing on now. So the change order is specific to this team and that would be the Gino Construction Team and their subcontractors. But I think it's important to note that this is a very large project and there's a lot of moving parts and lots of team members there. One topic that has repeatedly come up and we've had quite a bit of feedback from the community on is the trees. There's incredible concern about the trees. We have done this, what you're seeing here, this is not the final planting plan. This was issued about, I think about two weeks ago. But this is the phase one tree replacement plan and it does identify that the total count of the trees to be removed will be twenty. We are able to save one pin oak tree. And the cost for saving that that one tree is, it's about ninety one hundred dollars for the tree protection for that. And then it's around three thousand dollars for root pruning of the other trees in that area. So we do have an arborist that has been hired as part of this project under Bartlett Construction. They were the low bidder and also qualified for the project. And so they'll be advising with that. This plan does not show the pin oak, but I added the orange circle that you can see on the bottom just to show you where this tree is that we're saving. The reason that it is such a significant tree is that the arborist that consults with our our city team, our urban first forestry program through the agreement with the Spokane Conservation District, he noted that that is one of the trees that could be saved, but it cannot be relocated. And it is actually quite close to the building. So extensive efforts have to go into keeping it. As you can see, the replacement, and this is what this plan is showing, while we are going to be losing twenty trees, we will be replacing it with sixty trees. And I did meet with the nursery in in Bonners Ferry today and we will competitively bid this. But I want to say that the trees that have been planted historically in Sandpoint, in fact, over a thousand of them have been historically coming from the Bonners Ferry Nursery up north and they are harvested as well as grown locally. So they're hardier, they're the right species. The species that are identified on here, we're not sure that this is what we're gonna stick with. Again, this is a draft planting plan, so it is currently in final review. But it gives you an idea of what the canopy would look like and how it would be increased three times what the current canopy is. And we did do an assessment of several of the existing trees that are out there of those trees. Several of them are actually at the end of their life or they've been badly damaged or they have roots that are on on the surface and they tend to get run over by the mowers quite a bit, which damages them. In addition, there's the ash borer, which is threatening all of our ash trees here. It is currently in in the Oregon and particularly in Portland, it's moving this way. And we've been advised not to continue to plant the ash species because it is susceptible to ash borer. So it is, of course, very sad to lose trees always for construction. However, we will be tripling the canopy for the park when we are done. And then this final slide is a blow up and enlargement of that plan. It's the best way and it's the the drawing that I have to show you some of the impacts to what construction will look like. So we are tentatively looking at beginning construction here in the next week or two pending the signed contract after tonight. And we'll move pretty swiftly into, the first thing we'll actually do is have a pre-construction meeting. That's very typical. And we'll meet on site with our contractors that have all been hired, the subcontractors. And we're gonna go through all the other projects that are happening in the area. We're gonna go through the traffic control plan, the impacts to the neighborhood and how to mitigate that to the best of our ability. We do have some ideas that have been thrown out there. We have a tentative traffic control plan that was included with your packet. But all of that is still being reviewed by our city engineer as well as the internal parks team. Our number one goal on this, on the park side is to reduce the impacts to users and park users. So you can see the construction on the east side of the existing tennis courts of a new pedestrian pathway. One of the first things constructed will be that pathway. It will come off the plaza here. Here's Pine Street. This is not drawn to scale. Obviously, the skate park is there and you can just see we start the drawing at the existing tennis courts. But Pine Street is to the south of this drawing in the lower half of this page. And you can see that we would connect from the existing parking lot or plaza area just north of the skate park and then connect it all the way up. There would be fencing around the construction site and it will move. It will move as construction occurs. So we will not have this open until that path is safe and has been approved by by our construction inspectors. You can see to the northeast is the Bike Skills Course renovation that is scheduled to start in October as well. And I should point out that Gino has generously donated five thousand dollars toward that project as well as they will be using a great deal of the materials coming out. using a great deal of the materials coming out of the site, such as the soil and some of the boulders, um will be used for the renovation of the Bike Skills Course. Um, so that's just an example of some of the benefits that we can achieve through um this partnership and shared use of integrated uh uh additional projects in the area. We are hoping to find a skate park builder or concrete contractor who loves the skate park next. Um, okay, so moving north, you can see the footprint of the building. It is a little bit larger than the existing tennis courts. That's because it includes what you can't see is the drawing underneath, but if you've been paying attention over the last few months, there is this entire south end and that south end includes the overhang um on the external plaza as well as the community room, which will serve people, the restrooms, the lobby, the storage for our maintenance equipment and the mechanical room. Um, so we do have all of that. And just a reminder, for those of you wondering about restrooms, the existing restrooms at the park are going to stay for this year until the phase two playground comes on board. However, we will be uh building the restrooms that open to the outdoors on this building. So um those will be on the south end. Then getting back into construction. So after the fencing goes up, then they start demoing the site. Um, and and they'll start moving dirt, removing the vegetation, clearing off the topsoil, stockpiling what we can use. Um, uh, everything is to remain on site and will be used for future renovations. So for example, the soil that will be pulled out will be re-sculpted into a new sledding hill um and things like that. So all of that's going to remain. Um, and then then they're they're going to start um putting in all their stormwater uh control devices. So their SWIP is what we call it and that's to prevent any um impacts to the stormwater. Um, and the trees, when they are removed, they're going to be salvaged. We will be reusing the wood for the benches and for the wood that goes on the scrim of the building and anywhere else that we can use uh the wood. So for example, in signage and whatnot. Um, and we are using a local mill um company for that. Um, so that's all set in place. And then the picnic shelter that's existing as well as the existing playground are going to be relocated. So I I did highlight those. So the picnic shelter will be relocated to right here. And the playground, what we can salvage will be relocated here. We have had it inspected and audited by um our professional playground inspectors um as well as the manufacturer who the the manufacturer of the existing equipment. And um they believe that they can salvage the majority of the equipment. Um, we have in the bid ta- bids, we had wood engineered wood fiber, which is the type of material that we use out there. Um, we have a bid for that for about thirteen thousand dollars and it's about twenty-six thousand to reuse that equipment and move it. Um, the costs are going to fluctuate. That is what we needed to get for the bid because we're looking at what can we reuse of the existing wood fiber. And then remember, if you recall back to the bigger picture of the future pla- playground, that's going to be integrated in this area. And when that playground comes on board, we have it budgeted in there to turn the surfacing here over to uniform surfacing. So it will all be even. We don't know exactly what it'll be yet, but it will be, it will be uniform is the terminology and that's a descriptor for something like artificial turf or poured in place or uh tile. So if you've been to the playground at the county, that is a rubber tile. Um, I don't think we have any playgrounds here with artificial turf yet, but um that's what we're looking at is what what the uniform surfacing would be. And of course, that's all going to be bid in that future phase of the playground. Speaking about the future playground, uh, the future playground includes a playground and a splash pad extension. Um, we are uh um looking forward to having the land water conservation grant um approved at the federal level. As you recall, it was approved at the state level and we're in the the hands of the feds at the moment. Um, I I was anticipating that we would be moving forward with that design this fall and then we and we hope to construct in two thousand and twenty-four, but it could be um delayed depending if there's a government shutdown or whatnot happens. So um, just keeping that out there that it it is moving forward and um that is intended to go in this area. Now, construction, it's going to be a little bit nerve wracking at first because a lot of thi- a lot of things have to ramp up. And you'll start to see the heavy equipment there. Um, the playground and the picnic shelter, once it gets built, we will open it up right away. So going back to the flexible construction fencing. That will get opened as soon as we we get it constructed. So they the contractor um this week told me he thought about two to three weeks total to be able to do that. I'm not going to promise you anything at this point. We should have a construction schedule after we have our pre-construction meeting um in the next couple of weeks. And then I I'll be able to come back and give you more accurate dates on everything. Um, and we do hope to have a groundbreaking ceremony as well. And again, I'll I'll let you know when that is. Um, as well as all the details and we'll have a little bit more clarity on this, but we don't anticipate any impacts to any other users. Um, there will be no impacts to any of the fields, no impacts to the winter use. Um, I do believe the turkey trot is being moved up to Great Northern for this year, but um, like I said, the trail access will still be here along uh the new pedestrian path and you'll still be able to cut through and move north and south. Um, and I think that's it. Um, so with that in front of you, you have a resolution request to approve Amendment A twenty-three dash fifty-three for for Agreement A twenty-three dash fifty-three dash five um as Amendment Change Order Number Two for Geno Construction Company for the C M G C Services for the Traverse Park Renovations Phase One. Thank you.
Thank you, Maeve. Does Council have any questions?
I'll start. Um Maeve, uh, could you go back to the, well, to the latest landscaping plan? We see the new pedestrian path on the right side, on the east side of the existing courts. What will the what will be between the building and the existing courts when the project is completed?
Um, at the moment, that will be landscape and it's no storage and there's stairs that go in there. We are in the midst of a um a request to design the renovation of the existing tennis courts. Um, it may be that that moves to the east a little bit. We don't quite know what that design's going to look like. Um, those are in significant disrepair. So we'll know a little bit more about that. So that'll probably be in our uh change order number three.
Thank you. Um, I did have a question about the storage facility, the storage room in the building. Um, this came from a a resident uh who um asked me about this and I wanted to get clarification from you. Is that storage room being designed in consideration of the equipment needed to maintain the tennis courts themselves? I know there's some like mechanized equipment that is regularly used to maintain tennis courts. Would would that storage room fit that equipment?
That storage room is intended for the mechanical equipment. There would be an additional storage area for what you're speaking to is specifically it's the floor cleaner. I
I didn't say Zamboni, but that's totally different.
Like a Zamboni, but not quite, much smaller and a lot less expensive. Um, yes, so there would be an additional storage area for that.
And that's in the plans.
Correct, correct. Yes, um. If you have any questions like that, I would actually defer to the architects as well. I don't quite see them on the screen, but I want to check and see.
They're on. They're on. Just don't have their cameras on, so they can't tell they're on.
Um, Gail or Ruston, do either of you have anything to add to that question?
Um, yeah, this is Gail. I um I think you you answered it, Maeve. Yeah, we've we've taken a look at the equipment um that's recommended um by the manufacturer of the flooring coating that we'll be installing and and you're right, I would probably use the term like a Zamboni, but it's a a small um push uh sweep vacuum. And so there will be space in the storage area for that to be kept.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Senator President? Okay, I have a few probably more architectural things. Um, uh, reading through the documents, there was a lot about the natural lighting that occurs in the building. And I was curious how that interfaces with an R thirty insulation.
I'll defer to the architects again, please.
Yes, um, so there is going to be a portion on um each gable end of the building where we uh withhold having any insulation. Um, and what that does is it allows the two pieces of fabric to let some diffuse light through. Um, where we accommodate that as far as um eliminating some of the insulation. Um, there's formulas through the building code where we can uh the building energy code where we can uh calculate that that the rest of the building is making up for that. And actually, um, there's quite a a significant R value just in the airspace that's um kept in that cavity, which is about twelve inches. So that's where there will be hope uh some nice diffuse daylight coming in on either end of the building.
That sounds wonderful. Um, then my next question, when I was reading through the documents, um, I saw that it made uh note of fluorescent lighting. Um, I do believe Jennifer mentioned that we've kind of been in discussions about how that lighting is going to work and I was wondering why it was not LED lighting since it appears that's the direction of the world.
Yeah, so I I will um do a search back through the documents. It, there shouldn't be any reference to um fluorescent lighting, the the fixtures and and actually those will be in um, those will be bid in this next bid package that we'll have coming up in um November, but they will certainly be um LED light fixtures. And as Jennifer um alluded to, we've been reviewing the the lighting levels and ensuring that those photometrics levels do um comply with the U S T A uh standards. And that's a little bit of a balancing act with with energy code. They have some limitations to um the the power that you can use for lighting. So um but it will be, it the the other thing about the lighting is that it's um it's indirect lighting, so it will be lighting upwards toward the ceiling surface, which is a white. And so it uh creates quite a bright um indirect glow. So it should be quite nice.
Okay, um, I do agree with that statement after going to um the legacy link and looking at the buildings. Um, then the next question, um, when we're discussing um HVAC systems and utilities for the building. Um, my question would be, are we going to have um in the bathrooms for water, um, an on-demand system that could be electric as opposed to gas? Because it also seems like that's a cleaner source and the world is again moving in that direction.
Yes, currently, um, and and this will be, this is more in our mechanical engineers court. So I'm just speaking from memory on this, but um currently, um, our water heating system is gas powered. Um, there has been some value engineering proposals um for that to be an electric um source uh water heater. Um, so that's still somewhat influx as we're as we're completing the design and and going through the value engineering process.
As far as the um heating element, is that going to be gas?
For the for the overall H HVAC system?
Yes.
Yes, yes, it is a gas powered unit.
Okay, and then um I'm sure that this is more of a um budget constraint, but was there any consideration of um powering this building through solar means?
I think that the um, and maybe this is more a question actually that I should let um Maeve and Jennifer uh field this one at the outset unless you'd prefer I take it.
Yeah, I I have nothing to say to that except
Okay, um, I think at this point, um, the the budget precluded um studying that. Studying that, yeah.
And would if in the future there became potentially maybe grant funds or some other source available in the future? Could this building be compatible with something like that?
Right now, we haven't had um the legacy engineers um provide any additional structure that would accommodate that weight. The other component would be the roof slope and I think the orientation would would work just fine. Um, but the there's quite a significant slope on the roof. Um, so that would be something we would need to look into. And again, um, it would require additional structure from um the the legacy building system.
Okay, and then um relative to the building, my final question would be concerns about um snowslide off the roof in the winter and how that would affect um landscape design um or safety of pedestrians on pathways, et cetera. So has that been calculated into the design or is the building built in such a way that um it has stops? So there's not a snowslide issue?
Yes, we've we've considered that uh quite a bit. We've um the the legacy structure itself is is designed to shed snow. It's part of the reason why the roof is pitched as it is. Um, and that is a function of it allows them to um to have that fabric that they know will not have um snow collapsing in on it. So it's intended to shed snow. Um, along the eaves where the snow will be coming off, there's icebreakers which will break break up anything that's sliding off. Um, but because it's not intended to build up to significant depths, it should be kind of a continual sheeting off effect. Um, and we have considered what type of landscape and um and creating uh some spaces around the building so that um keeping that pathway away from the building. There will need to be an active um snow removal just to keep that path clear in in um the winter. But it has been something that we've been considering throughout.
Okay, so as I understand, it will be smaller amounts shedding instead of what I've experienced on metal roof homes where you get you know, something two feet thick, all of a sudden deciding to slide off. So, okay.
Right.
And then um my last thing is more of a statement, compliments. Yay, I saw bike racks in there. Um, I knew they were going to be there, but it's always nice when you see them on some final plans. And again, um, thank you so much for thinking about reuse of granite boulders, both inside of the bike park and positioned around the building or in the surrounding landscaping for places to relax and feel more in tuned with nature.
Thank you.
Senator President? Thank you. This is you guys, this is for staff specifically, I'd like to recognize uh you guys and this is very well thought out and will continue to be more thought out with some of the examples that were brought up tonight and a very thoughtful park. This is going to be a gem for our community. Um, I want to recognize the public here tonight. I'm certain that you guys will all have an opportunity to have something to say or at least an agreement. And I'm very, very appreciative of you being here. Uh, we need that. We need your guys' participation. We need to whether you're smiling or you're grumpy or you're so that we need to know that you're paying attention of the potential decisions that we have. And also, I'd like to recognize uh Jim Russell. We would not be having this conversation had it not been for his father and for their thoughtfulness and uh Jim, thank you very much for your patience, your tenacity. Um, Sandpoint is an interesting community and it takes a bit for us to all kind of understand and believe. So we're here to believe. Thank you.
Um, Maeve, I have a question um because I've been asked um by parents. So the relocated playground is pretty close to Pine Street. Will it be, will it have a fence around it? Will there be some sort of enclosure?
Um, yes, it is not next to Pine Street. The maintenance building is down here. The way that the drawing is shown.
Okay.
You have the entire parking lot width, which is, I bet it's a few hundred feet. Um, there is a barrier around it as well. There's a combination of logs and boulders. The, if you recall, the theme of the phase two playground is into the woods based on the Patrick McManus stories. Um, and we carry that theme throughout this as well. Um, so we are using the boulders on site as well as some of the timbers for that edging. Um, and there's also a vegetation buffer that you're not seeing because the landscape plan, again, what you're seeing here is only the tree protection plan. There's an entire landscaping plan, um, which is actually doubling as an outdoor classroom. So the out, the landscaping is in, is very well thought out. It uh functions as a stormwater uh uh retention. So it holds on to the water and then releases it when it needs to and into the system. So um, it sucks out all of the impurities is how I would put it in layman's terms, but essentially it's filtering out impurities, but it will double as an outdoor classroom. It will connect um the entire park to the broader landscape off in the distance. Um, and it will create a buffer as well.
Thank you. Reading the five hundred and forty-five pages. Thank you. Reading the 545 pages was a little long, but.
Thank you, Mave. Any other questions, comments?
Madam President, I just had one final one that I had forgotten. And this is more of a statement. I don't know for, many of you may know or may not know that I'm a physical therapist here in our community. And I've actually had more than one elderly patient point out, wouldn't it be great to have some type of walking club in the recreational pamphlet that in adverse weather, they could maybe use this new building to do some laps to stay fit and to stay safe? So just putting that out there for, you know, Mave's very long list. But it it, you know, brought up something that I myself had not even thought about how useful this building could be in many different ways.
Yes, to speak to that, council member, the facility is multi-use at the end of the day. And the core and the essence of it is multi-use. And it is fundamentally a recreation facility. So just to dispel any rumors that it wouldn't be, it is 1,000% an extension of the park. And it will serve as an indoor extension of the park. But there, we're hoping to be able to afford the roll-up doors all the way around. There's currently five of them in the design and hopefully we can afford them all. But can you imagine if we can open up all those doors and have an indoor-outdoor facility in all seasons? Like a day like today, when it's not too cold out, but it's raining, be able to play in there? We will program it depending on what space is available and what the demands and requests are of the community. And then there's that 50-person capacity community room, which will also, it it will interact with the the front and the south side that has that whole indoor-outdoor capacity. So I don't know, I personally want to see yoga and all the other fun things. You know, and we are working extensively on place-based recreation programming right now in our Parks Department. And you'll see some changes coming up in our new recreation programming. But I I just got a sneak peek at it earlier today. And Jason Wiley is really working hard. In fact, he's working with the You Can You Fit Gym on adaptive sports opportunities right now. And I don't know about you, but I can't wait to play with everyone of all ages and all abilities.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Madam President, one moment. And I would just, Madam President, if I could, anyone participating on Zoom, if you're interested in commenting on this matter, could we have city residents first? Please raise your hand and then we could call on others later. Okay, thank you. In the room, we have Jim Hagler.
Mr. Russell, thank you. City Council, thank you. Jim Hagler, not a resident of Sandpoint. I could spit into Sandpoint where I live, but that's another story. Been playing pickleball for about 20 years. This is one of the finest facilities for a small town that I have seen. And I've helped to develop two other, one in Bend, Oregon, and one in the Shimmel Park in Gagarva, Washington. I have transparency. I do work for the Parks and Recs Department in teaching pickleball. I'm their coordinator, also do the basketball. Spent 35 years as an NCAA referee. I want to thank you for your attention to this. Always thought we were a little bit behind the ball. I moved here in 2015. My my goal was to build, to build a program for pickleball for youth. Because I think, I believe the youth here are a bit underserved. And the biggest, over the last three years of teaching pickleball to some of the youth here, our biggest our our biggest barricade has been a consistent place. Because as you know, in the wintertime here, they'll go inside, they pick up their TikTok, they pick up this, they pick up that. Again, I want to thank you. I fully support this. I think it's a fantastic job that you've done. I know there's a lot of effort and a lot of time has been put into it. And thank the city of Sandpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagler.
Tish Litvin.
Good evening, Council. My name's Tish Litvin. I'm a Sandpoint resident and have been a Sandpoint resident for 20 years. Retired school district teacher here. But I'm here to voice my support of the Russell Complex. And thank you, Jim Russell, and your very generous donation. I'm also a very active and competitive tennis player and pickleball player. I look at the Russell Sports Complex as a tremendous gift to our community that will be enjoyed for for many generations. One item I'd like to address tonight, though, is the the building's description. And I'm taking a quote out of the recent Sandpoint Living Local Magazine, that it's a venue embracing four tennis and 16 pickleball courts. If the idea of the Russell Sports Complex is to be a shared-use facility where sports of both tennis and pickleball are given the best possible playing environment, this is definitely not what the proposed plan provides. To play tennis on a four-to-one court, which means four pickleball courts per one tennis court is nearly impossible as a tennis player. And the four-to-one design is is really not supported or approved by USTA standards. In fact, the USTA standards say that up to two pickleball court blended lines can be added to a 78-foot tennis court, one on either side of the net. So in addition to that, we've discussed the concept of 16 indoor tennis courts with local, a local pickleball instructor who just spoke and local tennis community members that are the president of the STA, and I'm currently the vice president of the STA, that the 16 indoor pickleball courts are really unnecessary. We're a city of just under 9,000 people. We have nine outdoor pickleball courts. We have eight outdoor tennis courts, two of which are pretty much unusable at City Beach due to the configuration of the pickleball lines. If the idea of hosting pickleball tournaments is the emphasis for providing 16 indoor courts, just bear in mind that Peak and in Hayden just presented, just held a tournament over 200 players on their four indoor courts. And they temporarily taped eight indoor courts. So please just consider a shared-use facility being a fair use facility. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Litvin.
Anne Giant-Belly.
Hi there, thank you all for serving as council members, so appreciate that. One question kind of at the beginning here for legalese is Travis Park renovations. A renovation is an act or process of repairing, renewing, or restoring to good condition. So I don't really feel like this is probably a renovation. And I am not in support of where this wonderful tennis and pickleball facility will be. I have deep concern for the plan. I appreciate the generous donation for the pavilion, but it seems counterintuitive to grossly modify what has been working well. Ball fields and adaptive playground by a helic where parents and guardians can keep an eye on their charges on the ball field and the playground, both at the same time. As for taking the maturing trees and eliminating the open space for free play is a travesty. It has been suggested that the pavilion be situated at Great Northern, which seems like a win-win situation. Little more space doesn't take away what is already there. I am sure a substantial amount of money has gone into plans. However, you don't really, you can't really replace what is already there. I know there are plans to expand parking as well, but four tennis courts in use can mean 16 players with 16 cars. And four tennis courts can accommodate maybe 16 pickleball courts with up to 64 players and cars. And I don't know that the parking is going to be adequate. Already, the parking is very full when there are ballgames going on. And as a former recreation administrator in public, private, and outdoor recreation positions, I do not see the benefits of the current plan. The destruction of maturing trees, taking away open space, taking down a playground to move some usable parts. I believe you know there is a better way. But maybe putting the tennis plant, the tennis pavilion at Great Northern, I know it's already been decided. But again, is this a renovation or is this something new? And I think we need to honor both dynasties for the Travers family as well as the Russell family. And I think maybe we're kind of stepping on the Travers family's toes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giant-Belly.
Bobby Kostwazin.
Bobby Kostanza. I'm a resident of Hope in the summer for about, for the last 10 years. And in the winters, we, we can't stand the snow, so we go to Arizona. I'm a, I was a tennis pro for 40 years. I've built and owned two tennis clubs. And eight years ago, I took a pickleball. I thought it was for old people until I looked in the mirror. And then at 70, at 70 years old, I decided I'm going to be one of the best players in the country in pickleball. And I've done that. And I'm, but I'm not here to talk about me. I want to compliment the the city and the council on providing what I think will probably be, no matter how many courts you build or you can build, probably a beautiful facility for the community. I compliment you on that. But I think the the point I'd like to leave you with is we, we had three courts in our town of Casa Grande, Arizona. And we got together with 100 pickleball players and the city built 12 courts. And within a year, those 12 courts were filled. So no matter how many courts you build, the players will fill those courts. And eventually, in the not-too-near-future, probably ask for more courts. So you might want to keep that in mind. The reason that, you know, when I, pickleball started in about 16 years ago, the Nationals, I mean, the Nationals started 16 years ago, there was 400 people. In November, I'll compete in the Nationals in Dallas, Texas, and there's 3,500 people. But not everybody's a tournament player. Most people are recreational players. And the reason that pickleball has grown to 9 million people during that time is because it's very social. Your friends will even teach you, you don't need to pay for your instruction. Equipment is fairly reasonable. Facilities are usually the the prime key in in making and growing pickleball. And it's and it's fun. I mean, my wife and I have traveled all over the country. And every place we've gone, we've found people to play with and we've left with new friends. So but I, but I want to, I want to warn anybody that's, that might think that they want to take up pickleball. It's very addictive. So be careful if you get out there on the court. And actually, even though I lived in Arizona, I started my pickleball career in Hope, Idaho. And I'm I'm grateful for pickleball. It's it's probably one of the best lifetime sports because you can play up from 10 to 90 years old. And I hope, hope everybody tries it sometime. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kostanza.
Good luck at Nationals.
How about the Huntsman Games?
Oh, yeah, those games.
There are 12,000 athletes in the Huntsman Games and 10% are pickleball players.
Pam Duquette.
Hi, I'm Pam Duquette, a Sandpoint resident. You've heard me speak on this probably too many times. I just have to one more time. In the 2020 Parks and Recs survey, page 29, there's a nice graph of what everybody in town you surveyed wanted for our parks. The top three were to ensure facilities and programs are affordable to all. Sounds like you're already going to have an issue with who plays and does what. But that's beside the point. The second, protect environmental resources and preserve land in its natural state. Third, maintenance of current amenities and facilities. So, yeah, Mr. Russell, thank you. This is going to be an amazing facility. It's going to satisfy so many people. I just wish we had taken time to find another place. I know the 38 acres up on Baldi had been talked about. I went up there today. It, it just seems like if we had given more time to think about other places, more input from the community on where they thought would be a better place than right smack dab in the biggest green space we have. That's all, and that really is all, because I guess it's a done deal. But thank you again, Mr. Russell, and for all your plans. And I know it was a lot of work and it sounds like a great facility somewhere else.
Thank you, Mr. Duquette. Kyle Schreiber.
Hi there, Kyle Schreiber, Sandpoint resident. I guess the the comment I have tonight isn't necessarily about the building. It's a question, is this how Sandpoint does business? By approving million, multimillion-dollar expenditures in the middle of the night? Slipped into a, at the end of a special hearing on a completely different topic? Look around, people are passionate about this. We need more public engagement. It's disrespectful to citizens to both for and against this project to present it in this manner. The city has several big and controversial projects coming up. Is this how we should expect all those projects to be decided and funded? This project has the support of the community, that's great. Let's discuss it and approve it in the light of day, not under the cover of darkness. If I understood correctly, city staff hasn't even finished reviewing all 545 pages of this contract. So that I ask, I ask that you guys count, table this so that we can be sure that we're being good stewards of the Russell generous donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber.
Madam President, I'm going to check on Zoom. Thank you. Nancy Schmidt.
Hi, my name is Nancy Schmidt. I am a resident of Sandpoint. And I am opposed to the location of the Russell Complex. I am an avid pickleball player, avid tennis player, disappointed with with what happened at City Beach. And I would like to just oppose the the real construction of what is happening in, and what they're planning to do with the construction of the Russell Complex. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
Steve Nybank.
Good evening, Council, Madam President, and especially Jim Russell for letting me present just a few moments of a little bit, little different angle to the pickleball. And must say that pickleball is spread around the world and has absolutely hit Sandpoint. I wish to emphasize the financial benefits of the dynamic sport to our community. Pickleball has become the fastest-growing sport activity in our community. And we have over 600 active players locally. Depending on whose statistics we're Depending on whose statistics we consider, there are 37 to 49 million pickleball players in the U.S. 87% of those players play two to seven times a week. Players of all ages are engaged, as we well know. In January 23, the National Collegiate Pickleball Association, NCPA, was formed with 50 universities. University scholarships are now in the planning phases and will soon, probably next year, be allotted. National television. Go up here, I'm sorry, Ms. Schmidt. Two scheduling systems, playtime scheduler and court reserve for players are now worldwide. 24 teams or pro teams have recently been formed with a $50 million 10-year contract. Purses are over $5 million this year. They actually went from two and a half to $5 million just recently. National TVs, including ABC, CBS, Fox Sports, Tennis Channel and YouTube, are televising tournaments and training programs regularly. The 28 Los Angeles Summer Olympics are working to qualify pickleball to their competition. Let's not forget the potential financial value to Sandpoint, value to our lodging, restaurants and tourism, as well as potential benefits to our youth securing pickleball scholarships to higher education. And Jim, we can thank you for that because that's going to help the youth so much in this community. Ernst &amp; Young Accountancy and Harvard Economics have been involved in monitor, monetizing the value of new commercial facilities for investment pitch decks. Currently, there is little hard data to share, only assumptions. The proven positive results is the Eagle Vale Colorado Chamber of Commerce. By popular request, the city installed six new outdoor pickleball courts in town. After a year, the local businesses were canvassed and the players' financial impact was enormous, they say. One lodging provider reported an $85,000 increase in three months. Bale is considering the indoor year-round facility and estimate the city will have an annual benefit of $1 million to $3 million.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
Amy Malkins?
Hello, my name, my name is Amy Malkemas. I live in Segal, but spend most of my free time here in Sandpoint. I play both pickleball and tennis. I'd like to express my support for the location in the build of Traverse Park facility. I feel the city has exhausted all its options. There's no budget to buy new land. Numerous reasons have ruled out Great Northern fields. The most burdensome, burdensome and cumbersome and expensive is to the need to widen Lincoln all the way from Pine Street because it's a very narrow street and the residents are pleading not for the building to go back there. Moving the playground is the only option. No baseball, soccer field or tennis court is going to be taken away. The current playground, which is not ADA compliant by today's standards, will be replaced and include amenities to support the sensory needs of autistic children. Already, the already funded playground will include a splash pad. The trade-off is the loss of some trees. I'm a gardener and I've always lived on acreage and I've planted dozens and dozens of trees in my lifetime. It's never a good thing to remove trees, but the health benefits and enjoyment of generations of Sandpoint tennis and pickleball players outweigh this. In the shoulder seasons, like now, there are many cold rainy days that leave residents little indoor exercise options. During the ski season, this facility will give those who can't afford to ski or physically can't ski like myself, a place to exercise and engage in social activity. I hope that the tennis and pickleball community can work together with the city on this project to meet the needs of both sports. I'd like to thank the Russell family that has been so generous in this donation. I feel it's time to move forward and build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Wells?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Ryan Wells. I'm a Dover resident and I've run a business in Ponderay for over 25 years. I would like to say a big thank you from the pickleball community. I know we have a lot of us here. In 2019, my wife and I started playing at the only two courts in town at the YMCA. We've seen the explosion, not only in North Idaho, but nationally. We've played hundreds of games at City Beach since that facility was opened up. We've been able to play with people from out of town, locals. Everybody comes together, exchanges numbers. It's a very fun scene down there. In the evenings, we go out to local restaurants afterwards and, you know, see each other in the local bars or restaurants. Not once has any of those people been confused by the lines. The pickleball players seem to be able to handle that pretty well. We've seen 30 plus people down there on any given night. Tennis is eight people, you know, on those two courts. And so the, the scalability of this and how many more people can get involved is, is tremendous. We have kids down there playing with their grandparents. You know, you don't see that in a lot of sports and it's, it's fun to see. The winter recreation of this alone, as many people have referenced, is huge. It's badly needed in our town. Altera is going to change the scene here. It's going to be different. It's going to be more expensive up there. We're going to have a different clientele in here and to have someplace like other people have mentioned that we can get together would be great. I'd like to speak quickly about the misinformation. Remember NICAN and the renderings of a completely sterile Sand Creek? All trucks, trains, no people, no paths, no nothing? Well, Sand Creek doesn't look like that. It's a beautiful recreation facility and people use it. But it was really pushed back on back in the day. We've had complaint about the trees. There's still a few million of them in the county and I think they grow here pretty quickly. Three times the amount of trees is significant in that space. People have already spoke about a bigger and better playground facility that accommodates way more people. You know, that shouldn't be a hang-up anymore. What if the residents of Coeur d'Alene had drug their feet on the Crock Center? What a loss would that have been, you know? And, and it's time that we honor what the Russell family has done. It's, it's a legacy gift. Why are we making this so difficult? I want to thank everybody that's been pushing forward on this. It's fantastic. It's time we get this done. The location is great. It's close to people and kids in town. It's a great gift that's been offered to us and we need to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Paul Remore?
Thank you, Council, for hearing me. Thank you, Mr. Russell, for giving us a dream come true. Thanks to Parks and Rec for helping us out. I represent Sandpoint Tennis Association. I'm the president. I've been here before and also the tennis community. We've had a wonderful relationship with Parks and Rec and the city, going back for many years. When even going back to Jim Parsons Jr., we were able to work with Kim Woodruff and Tish and myself to help save the, the part of the courts over at City Beach. And since then, the Sandpoint Tennis Association has been willing to contribute money for nets and supply workers. We were elated when we saw this opportunity for an indoor facility, but were a little concerned that it may have disturbed the courts that were presently there. We talked to Parks and Rec. They reassured us that they would maintain eight functional park, eight functional tennis courts so that we could have both recreational and high school competitive tennis. Through this, we were, we just, we were very supportive and I was here in May supporting this very strongly. However, a sudden little cloud came over the, the tennis situation. The markings at, at City Beach were what we call a three to one. We were shown that program on the screen, but we were not actually involved in its actual design. We accepted it, Kent and myself, with the understanding that it would work for tennis. Well, immediately it was apparent that that was not going to work for tennis once it came up. Then it goes over and takes a look at it. It's disorienting for tennis. It works for pickleball, it doesn't work for tennis. We brought that to, to City Park's attention. They admitted that that was done incorrectly. They were going to correct it. They had, they have a plan, which is next year to be implemented. But then it got even more sort of unfortunate. The city league, which we support and we supply the, the STA supplies, the schedulers for, became very disrupted because of a number of events which the tennis community was not made aware of. And so unfortunately, that's where some of the noise and static that has come to you guys from. The tennis community is so very concerned about the markings that will come, both in the outdoor courts, but most importantly, in the Russell Center. We, I have here, and I would happy to leave it here, for the USTA recommendations. You can get it on the computer. It's called the two-to-one system and it shows it here. I would really recommend that you help us get that. One way I can do that, and I think you have advised us to get a committee together, of pickleball and tennis. We would like to do that. If we can do that, it could be an advisory committee to the city of Sandpoint to help them get the configuration that will work best for us. Again, Mr. Russell, thanks for a dream come true.
Thank you, Mr. Remore.
Rebecca Holland?
Good evening, Council. Rebecca Holland, I've lived here 48 years in Bonner County. I was a business owner for 32 in Sandpoint. I photographed students. I photographed kids in sports. I've been a big sport promoter for all our, all my life. In March, I was really dismayed with the plan that was coming forward because I was hearing misrepresentations about a playground that was, that is well-serving our community. And as much as there's things that we could add to it and that would be great, there just seemed no good reason to be tearing this down. So I went and started talking to parents, parents at the playground. I get it, everybody loves pickleball and tennis in here. I play too. Not recently because I've been so darn busy. But I have over 300 signatures of parents. You don't see them here. They're home with their children and that's what I've been saying all along. This plan to take down, there's just, the whole thing has been about location. The 2020 master plan said the thing would remain, the playground would remain. It's very selective, your whereas that goes into this proclamation tonight. When we talk about location, people say, well, we shouldn't look at some of these others. The, the architects suggested that. If people are living next to a park, they should expect there'll be park improvements made, any more than a school building. So that's a really faulty argument. I found that the half million dollar grant that's coming can be added to the existing playground. It could, it could happen. What this is needed is this whole community, all of us, need to get together and have a sit-down, a real workshop like it used to be. We haven't had workshops and you know it. And that's the whole deal. It's location, location, location. The building is beautiful, but I can't help that imagine Jim Russell, who was raised here in the 30s, played on Sand Creek, was got into all kinds of mischief with Patrick McManus and we've read his books, would approve of killing these 20 gorgeous big park trees and moving a playground. Add the inclusive things to it. This is all good, but this plan sucks. And it's, it's, it's not right that it's just moving along. And I get it, people like their sport, let's do that. But it's in the wrong location and you have not engaged the people in what is called public land. The, this is the public's land. The ash trees, by the way, there aren't any ashes that I took inventory of that are going to be killed. So I don't know what that was about. The blue spruce, yeah, they're showing their roots, you know? Give it some more dirt, they'd be fine too. They're all healthy trees because the arborist, we did a public record request and the arborist says they're fine. There's none of them are at the end of their, their life.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
So that is another misrepresentation of fact. Thank you.
Andrea Wells?
Hi there, I'm Andrea Wells. I am not a resident of Sandpoint, but I do live in Dover. Spend a lot of time in Sandpoint. I am here to support the project. I think there is a lot of opportunity for us to come together over this. I, just listening to people who have spoken, generally I'm feeling that people do see opportunities to find a way to work together. Yes, there are some differences in how we want to see the lines on the courts, for example. I think we can easily overcome those things regarding, you know, the issues with taking down the playground and having to move it, removing trees, but also replanting. I mean, I think when we take a long view of this, and it sounds like it's not actually going to take that long to get the playground taken care of. Yes, trees take a while to grow, but those things are going to come back. And when, when we look at all that we have to gain through this, I think accepting a little bit of time that it's going to take for this to be put into place is certainly worth it. And I think we can all appreciate so many things in our life that take a process. Education takes a process. We don't get it done overnight. Pickleball takes a process. We're not pros overnight, nor are we pros at tennis overnight. Building a house, whether you've lived here for a little while or a long time, the building of the house wasn't something that happened immediately. And I just think it's really important for us to appreciate that, but also to be willing to say, okay, we see so many positive things that could come from this, that it's worth it for us to have some trade-offs for a little while. But we're going to realize something amazing at the end. I appreciate everyone here, all the work you've done on this, the challenges of listening to all the public input. I just, I feel for you and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Kelly Emerson?
Hello, good evening. I'm Kelly Emerson. I am a resident of Bonner County and I have a business here in Sandpoint. And my business is to help people move their bodies and be active. In fact, I'm just across the street here, momentum. And I have been a pickleball player for probably six years now. I can't speak to the tennis world. It's been a very long time since I've played that. But pickleball is the third largest, most popular recreational sport for elderly and youth. And I think that this facility that is being proposed here and donated by the Russell family is amazing for our community. And it sounds to me like all generations are going to be able to take advantage of this place in all seasons. So I really appreciate all the hard work and the donation from the Russell family and for you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson.
Tracy Dyke?
Oh, Madam President? We did receive some sign-up forms from a few people who indicated that they were in support of the, the action, but did not wish to speak. There were four of those.
Okay.
We'll check online one more time. Madam President, that is all from members of the public who wish to speak. I do believe that Mr. Russell does wish to speak.
Yes, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
As part of our presentation team, Jim would also like an opportunity to make a few comments. And before I hand off to Jim too, I would like to note for Council that this donation was to donors. It was Jim Russell, who's online, who is the son of James Russell. And it's his mom, Jenny Russell, who is James Russell's widow and a wonderful woman who grew up here, as did James, and were married here in the area before they eventually moved away for career opportunities for, for James Russell. Jenny and Jim are on the East Coast, so Jim has stayed up very late at night to join this meeting. And it's late for Jenny this evening. And so you don't see her online, but I do think it's important to note for the record that there are two donors and Jenny has actively participated in, in many of the meetings and many of our discussions, although you're not seeing her tonight. With that, Jim, if you want to round out our presentation to Council. Jim, I think you're on mute still. You're still muted. There you go.
We still can't hear you.
Jim, we're still not picking you up.
Is your volume up?
Do you want me to, Jim, do you want me to give you a call and I can just put you on speaker over my phone?
Do we have any lip readers?
Yes. So hang on, I'm going to put you on speaker and we might have to play with this for a minute because I'm not sure how loud this will come across.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, I have you on speaker.
All right. Thank you. I hope, I hope everybody can hear me. I apologize. I'm having technical difficulties with my microphone on my computer. Can you hear me okay? Or is this just in the too hard category?
We're good.
We're good.
Okay, thank you. All right. So first of all, I want to thank the council, Madam President. I want to thank Jennifer and Maeve. And I also want to thank everybody that's in the room that participated in this meeting. There have been numerous of these meetings similarly over nearly two years and there have been lots of dialogue and I want to thank everybody that participated in that. This is exactly what, what we were hoping for. Regardless of what happens throughout the remainder of this evening, I think the dialogue was, was excellent and both voicing people's advocacy for this and concerns for this. That is what, what the United States is founded on and I really appreciate everybody's participation. The whole, the whole intention of, of this was to bring community together. And I know some people are not happy. Many are, many may not be, but the community is coming together in this endeavor and I think that's valuable. I know my dad would think that's valuable also. I just am sad that he couldn't be a participant and, and see this to its closure. Jennifer, thank you for acknowledging my mom. That was the biggest reason I wanted to speak up in that this was a joint donation by mom and myself in honor of my father. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved in this on the city side for nearly two years in planning and working through the details and working through the roller coaster of dealing with various contractors and getting us to this point. And thank you to the city council for all the consideration and listening to both sides from all the community members. I really don't have much more to say. Obviously, it's, the project is something that, you know, we hope can, can proceed, but I leave that up to the council. That is their decision, not my decision. But if I'm, if I'm going to have a say, I'm going to say I'm a big advocate of both the location and the design. I know what's gone into, to both those, all the effort that's gone into making those decisions and those recommendations. So with that, I'm just gonna, I'll, I'll be quiet. And thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from council?
I would like to make a comment. I think the most impactful person that I've heard from through this entire thing was last meeting when Megan Cox, I believe her name is, 15 years old, came and stood up there and said that for her as a tennis player, this was remarkable. That this was a life changer for her, that now she could play in tournaments in the winter and had aspirations to be a professional tennis player. And it was great. The location is perfect so that she could, because the kids can walk here. And I think that's what it's about. When I hear comments about putting it up on Baldy, that's a long ways. And how would those kids get there? How would they get there? And I believe that's, you know, for me being on council, I'm the oldest one here, thinking about the future and our generations, that's extremely important to me. And I, I love the trees. I'm married to a retired forester. But I think the city has done a thoughtful job with the replacement of the trees, but it's about the kids. And it's about the kids who have disabilities, who can play at that park because we'll be long gone when the, when they're, they're still around and they'll be able to play tennis throughout the year. And I think that was the most impactful person that I've heard speak throughout this entire time is that young woman who is brave enough to stand before us. And so, thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing.
Hey, please.
Council President. I wasn't here for the last couple of meetings and I do apologize for that. A comment I heard tonight, I'm just not only doing this for myself, but really to defend you guys, even though we don't always agree on everything. Almost a comment being made that there was things done in the secret of the night. Some, was there meetings that I wasn't invited to? I don't think so. And I would know. And yes, there are parents at home who weren't able to make this meeting. I have four kids, so it is a sacrifice. All of this is a sacrifice. All of you being here, even those who disagree or for this, all the meetings were open to the public. I could tell you multiple meetings I've come home very late, all of us, because of these meetings. And so far as I'm aware, there's been, I just want to be clear and defend council. As far as I know, there's been no meetings done in secret in the middle of the night without the community being invited or able to be here. Full disclosure, I don't even know what pickleball, like, I don't even know what that is. So and looking at the competition, I don't know if I want to, but my guys are pretty serious. So my, but I have young kids and maybe that'd be something some of you guys can help me out with. With my kids, it's not a facility that I even foresee myself really using, to be honest. It's not. I'm a basketball player, I'm a volleyball player, and this facility will not even accommodate those things, nor should they. It would, too many sports would actually probably make it more useless. So I do support it and I'm thankful for staff and everybody working hard. I'm thankful for the community coming out and giving their positives or negatives about it. I believe there's a lot, lot of misinformation about this and I still, and we all have encouraged everybody to come to meetings and speak up and make your voices heard. Nothing's done in secret, so please, please continue to come and be involved and thank you very much, everybody, for being here till late night, so.
Madam President.
Yes.
Just a, a small correction. Berkeley Cox was actually the young lady that came to speak to us.
I knew, I got the last name right.
Yes. And I think she, what impressed me most about her, it was her courage to come, but also her kind caringness for understanding. She is currently a senior in high school and she spoke of how her younger sisters would be able to use this facility and progress on through and, and do great things. And then I would just like to say that I appreciate hearing all the opinions, whether for or against. I do agree with Jim in that it's really important that we all come together with those types of discussions. I think it makes our world more robust. And then my final word would be that I do realize there are some sacrifices for change to happen, but I think as somebody in the audience said that as we look down the road more long term, I think that this will grow into a beautiful facility. But I myself have a little tiny spot in my gut that really doesn't want to get rid of those trees either, but I see the bigger, grander picture and to know that they're going to be replaced by three times as many. I think we're doing a great job.
Anyone else?
Madam President. Just since this is, you know, a chance to, with Mr. Russell on the line as well, just to share some of these thoughts that we have and our support for this project. I spent several hours today looking through the 545 page bid package and it led me on some searches of the, the company that's building the structure, the legacy built, structure buildings, legacy building structures. And I was shocked that it took me back to my own youth. I grew up in a small town in Michigan that was very cold, very similar climate to here, very dark winters. And I was fortunate enough to get to take tennis lessons throughout those cold winters. And when I saw that structure from the inside, there's several tennis centers on their website that they've built around the country. It took me back to my own youth because I, it was just something that I got to do as a kid that I wouldn't have gotten to do if there hadn't been an indoor public tennis center in my town in Michigan. And I've played tennis my entire life since then. If, if that facility hadn't been there, that was an opportunity that I would not have had. And, you know, it's, I think people who know me know that I'm not, you know, tennis is like one of the things I do, but I, it's one of the things that I do today as an adult because I had that opportunity as a kid. So I have some bad news for the pickleballers and tennis players in the room tonight. You're gonna have to wait your turn because these courts are going to be first and foremost for the kids of Sandpoint, who we are building it for, so that all winter, when there's nothing for them to do outdoors, they can't afford a ski pass, they're going to be in there playing tennis and learning how to play pickleball as well. We've seen it happen in our community. Four years ago, we lost our cross-country ski trails at the University of Idaho property. Within a year, the Sandpoint Nordic Club built five miles of public trails in Pine Street Woods. And today, over 600 public school kids have been introduced to cross-country skiing for free through the Nordic Club's cross-country ski program. Many of those have gone to join the Nordic Club and become part of the rec league or the competition league. The same has happened with mountain biking trails. I take a little credit for that. Pondre Peddlers has built 16 miles of trails. We have had 300 kids in three years go through our youth program. Before those trails were there, there was no place for kids to mountain bike in Sandpoint. Right now, there's no place for kids to play racket sports in Sandpoint for most of the year. And on the few courts that we do have, they're booked all the time. I go all the time and can't play because there's doubles league going on, on a couple nights a week at Lakeview Park. But once we have this facility, we're going to open up an opportunity to build a whole new community of enthusiasts and lifelong participants in these sports. So just like I got to be introduced to tennis, thanks to a public indoor facility when I was seven years old. I, I foresee, you know, 30 years from now, my kids hopefully making this a lifelong sport because we are pursuing this opportunity now. And I love the location. Berkeley gave all the reasons we needed to hear about why this is the best location for this facility. So I won't repeat those.
Don't tell her I got her name wrong.
She's going to find out. She might be watching.
I'm sorry. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for change order number two to the agreement with Gino Construction of Idaho Incorporated for Traverse Park Renovations Phase One CM slash GC Services City Agreement Number 235300-5.
Second. Oh, second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Oops.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
Yep.
Counselor Rule.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, and thanks to your mother. Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Motion passes. With no further business on the agenda, this meeting is now adjourned at 8:44 PM.